Could we please start with a roll call, Sarah?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Samore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public invited to be heard, the first person on the list is Michael Cooley.
That's right, very good, thank you. I wish I was the second person on the list so I would know how to do this, but anyway, my name is Michael Cooley. I live at 420 North Parkside Drive near the rec center and I want to say that you have a very nice town here. I've lived here for about a year. I moved here from Vermont near Stowe and I'm glad I did. That's very nice too, but I really like your infrastructure and your facilities and all of your employees of the city really are always very helpful and professional and this is really a nice place to live. I'm asking you, I'm a veteran, a Vietnam veteran and I'm working with veterans, helping veterans now, but I don't represent them. I'm just a volunteer there and I'm a member of the American Legion Post in Longmont, Post 32. And what I'd like to ask the council, I guess, to consider is giving returning veterans from the war zones in the Mideast, let's say, a 90-day pass to the rec centers. It'll really help them reintegrate back into your community and the rec center is a beautiful place to do that, among the other things they're gonna do because there's a cross-section of the community there. People of all ages and the facility and the equipment's great and they can relax if they need to relax or they can, you know, play games, I mean, play sports and, you know, take classes, dance classes, all kinds of stuff there. So, you know, since 9/11, we know that there's, you know, a lot of violence in the world and these people have been out there in the war zones keeping that away from here, so I think we should show them some appreciation for the sacrifice they made. They had to leave a nice place like this and go to some places that are pretty difficult to be in, but they kind of did it for the people back home and everything, so I hope that you'll buy into this and if you do and you get some media involved, I think it will speak very highly for Longmont and, you know, it might be good for business and certainly it should make you all feel good. I think that's three minutes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next person on the list is Steve Donellen and please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hello, Steve Donellen, 2437 Torrenian, Longmont, Colorado. Happy New Year to one and all. I have a couple of items. The first one is about the seismic investigation of our Longmont lands. That's fine as long as we own the mineral rights. If we don't own the mineral rights, I wouldn't let any seismic investigation on our lands because that opens up a can of worms. If they find something, I'm sure they'll jump in and buy it, but if we own the mineral rights, sure, let's see what happens. Let them go ahead and explore. The second item is the Union Reservoir proposal to enhance it. I think we should not spend a thin dime on such an endeavor. Why? Because there's gonna be fracking out there. If there wasn't any fracking out there, I'd be 100% for it, but I don't see anyone wanting to come and see a bunch of storage tanks and drilling and trucks coming in and out causing all kinds of dirt, noise, distraction, whatnot. It's just not the thing to do. Perhaps we could employ some of these ideas around Macintosh if we own the mineral rights around Macintosh, which I have no idea if we do or don't. To me, it'd be like building a great playground in the middle of an oil refinery. It just makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joe Bassman, followed by Marilyn Belczynski.
Thank you, I'm Joe Bassman, 3414 Lakeview Circle in Longmont, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. City council will soon vote on a request by Cougar Land Services for an oil and gas survey on city property for Anadarko Oil. The survey does not benefit our city. The data will be Anadarko's private property and Cougar will pay us only a few dollars per acre for our permission. Longmont receives absolutely no benefit from the survey unless one believes that it's beneficial to invite the oil industry further into our entire city for a drilling bonanza. Oil and gas well drilling is racing toward Longmont. There will soon be hundreds of wells within the city at Union and Samstone. The entire city of Longmont is located within the Wattenberg Oil Field, the richest of the Niobrara, perhaps even the richest oil and gas play in the United States. And there will be many hundreds of additional wells within our city in the near future. The Colorado Oil and Gas Commission regulations in the Wattenberg are exceptionally lenient. Since the COGCC refuses to differentiate between municipal urban areas on the one hand and rural agricultural land and oil fields on the other, those lenient Wattenberg rules will also apply within our city. In its proper place, oil and gas facilities might be acceptable. In an urban environment, there is no net benefit. Each well represents an intensive industrial activity using tens of millions of gallons of poisoned water that require quarantine forever, thousands of tanker truck deliveries, around-the-clock disrupted drilling and fracking using lights and equipment that requires 40,000 horsepower to operate. For many hundreds of wells, the scale and impact to our city are at least alarming, if not terrifying. The cost to the health, safety, and property of our citizens far outweighs any royalties the city government might receive. We are looking to city council to protect our community and surely, the city manager, the city attorney, and their staff must be looking to you for formal public guidance so they can responsibly fulfill their assignment to update our regulations. You've received and considered the opinions of your advisory boards, but now let us hear your personal feelings about the place of oil and gas facilities in our lives in our city. Tonight, proclaim to your constituents, your advisory boards, and to city employees that our city has a guiding principle. Proclaim our city government will not promote, encourage, or enable gas and oil development even one inch beyond what is forced upon our community by the COGCC. Instruct the city manager to create regulations that protect our community to the fullest extent possible. Use Longmont's city boundaries to shield us from the personal, economic, and physical damage that oil and gas facilities will cause in an urban setting. Say no to Cougar. Your vote on Cougar will be your personal stand. If you are averse to having oil and gas facilities within our city limits, then say no to Cougar. Thank you.
I have a couple of documents submitting for acceptance into the record, if I may.
This includes a map of our way approaching the city as well as some recommendations.
Thank you, Joe. Actually, next up is actually David Pelster, followed by Marilyn Belczynski.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, my name is David Pelster. I live at 1574 Gosock Drive. I am requesting that you say no to Cougar surveying our city for oil and gas. The Colorado Oil and Gas Commission does not require that the city allow seismic surveying for promoting oil and gas exploration. Voting no to Cougar will show that you do not advocate for oil and gas exploration within our city. Again, I would like to restate, within our city. My home is in the city, next to the Boulder County proposed top consolidated drilling location. Homes in my community that face this future industrial drilling pad are already starting to list for sale. Regretfully, my wife and I have also decided to list our house for sale. When Cougar finds that oil and gas can be exploited throughout our city, it will become inundated by oil and gas production, affecting all Longmont residents that live next to the edge of the city or near open space, not just near Union Reservoir. It could be near Macintosh Lake, near the airport, near golf courses, near cemeteries, near the fairgrounds. Wherever there's open space 350 feet by 350 feet or larger, homeowners near drilling activity within the city will lose value to the profit of oil companies. If you allow Cougar to come into our city and if they find oil and gas is accessible, which is highly likely, my local community will not be the only community in Longmont that will have home values adversely affected by oil and gas exploration. Remember, COGCC setback requirements are only measly 350 feet in urban areas. As you drive around Longmont, look at all the open space that is 350 feet by 350 feet or larger. I urge everyone, including those watching on TV and the internet, to drive out to the corner of Fairview Street and Highway 119 to see the drilling location that has a fracking operation in progress, to see that this really is a serious industrial activity, not meant for urban environments, not good for the future of our city. Please keep oil and gas confined to agricultural and industrial locations outside of our city. Your vote on Cougar will show where you personally stand. If you do not want the city to be overrun by oil and gas operations, say no to Cougar.
Thank you. Next up, Marilyn Belczynski.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I address you tonight on a human level. One Longmont resident to another, one temporary Planet Earth dweller to another, temporary Planet Earth dweller. Fracking is a human problem. It demonstrates how greedy and selfish we can be, caring only about what suits our demands, both as individuals and as corporations. More, more, more. More oil, more gas, more water. When Longmont's water supply is abundant, it takes all of us recognizing we already have enough. Why else would we be exporting it? Can we pause, assess, and really think not only of ourselves, but of generations yet to come? Who will deserve the same rights we have? To clean air, clean water, and a safe and beautiful place to dwell? So, reach deep within. Search your conscience and remember, you were elected by your fellow humans here in Longmont. It is all of us, all of us and out there that you represent, not anyone or anything else. So, I ask you to document your humanity and intentions by not allowing Cougar land processes to initiate their activities, to stop supporting the Windy Gap Water Project, and to seriously consider banning fracking in Longmont, which is possible with our home rule status. Colorado State Constitution, Article 20. Thank you for your time and I really hope you were listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Teresa Foster, followed by Kate Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I'm Teresa Foster, 712 Thornwood Way in Longmont. Please say no to allowing Cougar to do a seismic survey in the city of Longmont. Allowing a seismic survey is akin to opening the floodgates to a company that does not have our best interests in mind. This is from Anadarko's website. Our mission is to deliver a competitive and sustainable rate of return to shareholders by developing, acquiring, exploring. For gas and oil resources vital to the world's health and welfare. Folks, they are not talking about the health and welfare of Longmont. Citizens, their job is to make money for the shareholders. But just imagine our city being overwhelmed with toxic fumes, contaminated groundwater, and people getting sick. And furthermore, these frackers are already using our precious water and they paid pennies on the dollar for it, water that our citizens paid dearly for. So, who allowed that? I urge the city council to stop leasing this water to A&amp;W Water Service. Are you aware that once water is used for fracking, that it is no longer usable and is forever removed from the water cycle? People downstream are out of luck. Also, I'd appreciate knowing your thoughts and concerns after watching the DVD I gave you at the December 20th city council meeting that was titled, "What You Need to Know About Natural Gas Production." And so, this was produced by the Enerkin Destruction Exchange, also known as TEDx. I'd like to reiterate that Dr. Theo Colburn is available to answer your questions about the toxicity of the chemicals used in the fracking process, as well as the health effects from inhaling volatile organic compounds released during and after drilling operations. There is a mother who lives in Erie that I recently spoke to, who has gas wells 350 feet from her home. She has lesions on her spine that were not there before the drilling began. Can you call that a coincidence? Her children suffer from bloody noses and have developed asthma. These are some of the things that we can expect if we allow fracking to come into Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Kate Johnson, followed by Judith Blackburn. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Kate Johnson. I live at 11227 North 66th Street in Longmont. Thank you, Mayor and city council for unanimously approving the four-month moratorium on oil and gas applications. You may have seen the editorial in today's Times Call saying that the moratorium is a good decision. While I'm grateful that the Times Call sees the merits of your decision, the editorial itself oversimplified the concerns of the citizens and the reasons for why this moratorium and the tighter regulations that are hopefully forthcoming are so important. First, the editorial states that the oil and gas companies rightfully argue that chemically-charged fluids are pumped deep below the water table, that wellbores are lined, and that the surface is protected from used fluids. And so, therefore, they say the fracking process should be allowed. I'm not sure I agree how rightful that argument is, but I can say that it shouldn't surprise anyone that the oil and gas companies would say that. Of course they would. They want to drill. I wouldn't expect them to say that there are known and unknown dangers and risks to this process, especially in a heavily populated area. But I certainly hope that the city council and city staff will take their arguments with a grain of salt and pay attention to the legions of mounting evidence that argues differently. The editorial goes on to say, "They, Longmont residents, have reason to be concerned about groundwater quality, even if the drilling company guarantees it won't be tainted." Wow, guarantees it? Okay, I don't know about you, but I find that a little suspect. If they truly guarantee it... My home is in the city, next to the Boulder County proposed top consolidated drilling location. Homes in my community that face this future industrial drilling pad are already starting to list for sale. Regretfully, my wife and I have also decided to list our house for sale. When Cougar finds that oil and gas can be exploited throughout our city, it will become inundated by oil and gas production, affecting all Longmont residents that live next to the edge of the city or near open space, not just near Union Reservoir. Could be near Macintosh Lake, near the airport, near golf courses, near cemeteries, near the fairgrounds. Wherever there's open space, three hundred and fifty feet by three hundred and fifty feet or larger, homeowners near drilling activity within the city will lose value to the profit of oil companies. If you allow Cougar to come into our city, and if they find oil and gas is accessible, which is highly likely, my local community will not be the only community in Longmont that will have home values adversely affected by oil and gas exploration. Remember, COGCC setback requirements are only a measly three hundred and fifty feet in urban areas. As you drive around Longmont, look at all the open space that is three hundred and fifty feet by three hundred and fifty feet or larger. I urge everyone, including those watching on TV and the Internet, to drive out to the corner of Fairview Street and Highway 119 to see the drilling location that has a fracking operation in progress, to see that this really is a serious industrial activity, not meant for urban environments, not good for the future of our city. Please keep oil and gas confined to agricultural and industrial locations outside of our city. Your vote on Cougar will show that you are personal, will show where you personally stand. If you do not want the city to be overrun by oil and gas operations, say no to Cougar. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Marilyn Delchinsky.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I address you tonight on a human level. One Longmont resident to another, one temporary Planet Earth dweller to another, temporary Planet Earth dweller. Fracking is a human problem. It demonstrates how greedy and selfish we can be, caring only about what suits our demands, both as individuals and as corporations. More, more, more. More oil, more gas, more water. When Longmont's water supply is abundant, it takes all of us recognizing we already have enough. Why else would we be exporting it? Can we pause, assess, and really think not only of ourselves, but of generations yet to come? Who will deserve the same rights we have? To clean air, clean water, and a safe and beautiful place to dwell? So reach deep within. Search your conscience. And remember, you were elected by your fellow humans here in Longmont. It is all of us, all of us and out there that you represent, not anyone or anything else. So I ask you to document your humanity and intentions by not allowing Cougar land processes to initiate their activities, to stop supporting the Windy Gap Water Project, and to seriously consider banning fracking in Longmont, which is possible with our home rule status. Colorado State Constitution, Article 20. Thank you for your time, and I really hope you were listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Teresa Foster, followed by Kate Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Teresa Foster, 712 Thornwood Way in Longmont. Please say no to allowing Cougar to do a seismic survey in the city of Longmont. Allowing a seismic survey is akin to opening the floodgates to a company that does not have our best interests in mind. This is from Anadarko's website. Our mission is to deliver a competitive and sustainable rate of return to shareholders by developing, acquiring, exploring, for gas and oil resources vital to the world's health and welfare. Folks, they are not talking about the health and welfare of Longmont citizens. Their job is to make money for the shareholders. But just imagine our city being overwhelmed with toxic fumes, contaminated groundwater, and people getting sick. And furthermore, these frackers are already using our precious water, and they pay pennies on the dollar for it, water that our citizens paid dearly for. So who allowed that? I urge the City Council to stop leasing this water to A&amp;W Water Service. Are you aware that once water is used for fracking, that it is no longer usable and is forever removed from the water cycle? People downstream are out of luck. Also, I'd appreciate knowing your thoughts and concerns after watching the DVD I gave you at the December 20th City Council meeting that was titled "What You Need to Know About Natural Gas Production." And so this was produced by the Enercon Destruction Exchange, also known as TEDx. I'd like to read it, reiterate that Dr. Theo Colburn is available to answer your questions about the toxicity of the chemicals used in the fracking process, as well as the health effects from inhaling volatile organic compounds released during and after drilling operations. There is a mother who lives in Erie that I recently spoke to, who has gas wells three hundred and fifty feet from her home. She has lesions on her spine that were not there before the drilling began. Can you call that a coincidence? Her children suffer from bloody noses and have developed asthma. These are some of the things that we can expect if we allow fracking to come into Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Kate Johnson, followed by Judith Blackburn. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Kate Johnson. I live at 11227 North 66th Street in Longmont. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for unanimously approving the four-month moratorium on oil and gas applications. You may have seen the editorial in today's Times Call saying that the moratorium is a good decision. While I'm grateful that the Times Call sees the merits of your decision, the editorial itself oversimplified the concerns of the citizens and the reasons for why this moratorium and the tighter regulations that are hopefully forthcoming are so important. First, the editorial states that the oil and gas companies rightfully argue that chemically-charged fluids are pumped deep below the water table, that wellbores are lined, and that the surface is protected from used fluids. And so therefore, they say, the fracking process should be allowed. I'm not sure I agree how rightful that argument is, but I can say that it shouldn't surprise anyone that the oil and gas companies would say that. Of course they would. They want to drill. I wouldn't expect them to say that there are known and unknown dangers and risks to this process, especially in a heavily populated area. But I certainly hope that the City Council and city staff will take their arguments with a grain of salt and pay attention to the legions of mounting evidence that argues differently. The editorial goes on to say, "They," Longmont residents, "have reason to be concerned about groundwater quality, even if the drilling company guarantees it won't be tainted." Wow. Guarantees it? Okay, I don't know about you, but I find that a little suspect. If they truly guarantee it, let them put the necessary money up front that it would take to fix a groundwater contamination if it were to occur, including all potential costs in terms of health issues, environmental cleanup, and lost property values. If they can truly guarantee it, they shouldn't have any problem putting this money aside ahead of the drilling, since there's apparently no chance they'll ever have to use it. I believe this editorial was incredibly short-sighted and oversimplified. While it mentions the concerns about groundwater quality and a brief mention about property values, it fails to mention all the other concerns that residents rightfully have, including traffic, noise, lights, vibration, air pollution, the vast amounts of water that will be taken out of the water supply forever, to name a few. These are the numerous issues that I hope City Council and city staff will be sure they fully understand, and that they will take all necessary steps to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of Longmont residents and properties. I'd like to say that I absolutely see no reason for the city to approve the request by Cougar Land Services to do oil and gas survey on city property. It may not be easy to say no to drilling once it gets here, but you can easily say no to this survey request. Why open the door to the potential of a drilling frenzy within our city limits? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Judith Blackburn, followed by Joe Kelleher.
Judith Blackburn, 3724 Oakwood Drive, Longmont. I want to thank you for last month's vote to initiate a moratorium on applications for oil and gas leasing and on fracking within Longmont city limits. I had advocated for a longer moratorium, but I'm glad that the Longmont Times Call today did endorse the one we got, and I'm hoping that you and we, the citizens of Longmont, can make good use of the four-month timeframe to research and craft the best possible energy and water policies as we move forward. For me, last month's decision and the charge to the city staff to recommend policies raised lots of questions, which I hope will be answered this evening or in the near future. First of all, I'm wondering, what exactly is the council's charge to staff? I heard Councilman Bagley ask staff for a policy that would include as many checkmarks as possible in the graph that depicted regulations other communities have asked for from the oil and gas corporations. Is there a more focused directive from council than that? Are there certain limitations or guiding principles council is expecting the staff to implement? If so, is such a written request document available to the community as well? Secondly, does the moratorium include a stop on seismic surveys, seeking to determine whether or not drillable gas exists under Longmont? I personally see no reason to consider applications for such surveys until we are more clear about whether or not we're going to have drilling in the city. And that brings up the most difficult question for me, which is whether we should allow drilling within city limits at all. I know that representatives from the Oil and Gas Commission and other experts have stated emphatically that the city has no power to stop fracking, but you will remember that Wes Wilson last month told us that cities in Colorado do indeed have the legal right to forbid fracking, that it is a myth that they don't. I'm hoping that city staff will research that possibility, especially for a home-rule city like our own. Other cities seem to have found ways to put off fracking. And finally, I want to request that you and we get progress reports from city staff all along the way, and not just at the 60-day point that you requested last month. My idea is that the more open and collaborative this process of examining our fracking options is, the more satisfied we will all be with the final result. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joe Kelleher, followed by Deb McCabe.
Hi, I'm Joe Kelleher, 12628 Well County Road 1. Mayor Coombs and City Council, thank you much for declaring the moratorium. Now we gotta really get into it and study it and see, you know, how you can control this. The only thing I want to bring up tonight is, in 1910, Terracom did a limited site investigation into Sherwood and Bogart Properties. Of the seven wells, they took soil and water samples, three wells had some contamination over the COGCC reporting limits. I only got into the detail of the Stamp Number 2 well because it's close to me and it's right by Union Reservoir. Information for the contamination of the Cerafani and the Powell Number 1 wells were included at the end of this. One of the most, one was not as badly contaminated as the other, but just now, the next chart are the two test wells at the stamp, not the next chart, I'm sorry, right here in the middle where I've made, it's just easier, the chart's in here. But if you just look at this, one well, B-11 and B-13, it gives the, what was contaminated. And benz, in B-13, benzene was 5.8 times what the reportable limit is. And there were, in the other well, there was none. And taluene had no, they didn't find any in either one. Ethylbenzene was 20 times more than reportable limits in the B-11 well. Not to be dramatic, but that's 2,000 percent, put two zeros behind that. Ethylbenzene in the B-13 well was 9.8 times. Xylanes in the B-11 well were 2.8 times. Xylanes in the B-13 well were 340 times, 3,040 percent. Gasoline range hydrocarbons in B-11 were 18.4 and in B-13 were 13.38. Soil samples taken from the B-13 show dark gray petroleum staining and odor at three and a half feet. This is approximately 500 feet from the edge of the reservoir. But what might be of greater concern is that, what's the water table down there at the Stamp 2 well? At my house, 1,600 feet from the water, it's nine to 10 feet. So is it down to the water table yet? That might be more of a concern than how far it is from the water. I don't know. Obviously, it's great that the city had the foresight, the city staff had the foresight to test the 11 wells, or the seven wells. And that's all I'll say, but there's, the one last paragraph in there talks about, it's not just local. Seven spills every five days is what the Denver Post reports, 2 million gallons through September 13th, 11th of this year.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next up, Deb McCabe, followed by Larry French.
Hi, I'm Deb McCabe, 3470 22nd Street in Boulder, and the manager of the Longmont Sculling Club out at Union Reservoir. And we've been very happy out there for the last four years. It's a beautiful place to row, and looking forward to the improvements that Paula Fitzgerald and her staff have, or will be proposing tonight in their new master plan. I want to thank her for all of her efforts over the past many years, since probably before I, before we started out at the lake. And wanted to also thank the community for their, their support. I think she's gotten some good feedback. I know she's been very forthcoming to me and the Sailing Club and the other organizations out there, looking for how things are now and what it is that we might be looking for in the future. So really wanted to acknowledge Paula and all the work that she has done, and I hope that you will approve her plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Larry French, followed by Gail Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I assume that you all have this, Dale said he put it out a little deal. I have the farm, which is basically on the west side of Union Reservoir, and the city of Longmont, developers trying to purchase, the city of Longmont approached me and bought it for future reservoir expansion, and we did that, entered into a lease, which is part of the contract. And, and I have just found out that the possibility of a trail going around the reservoir, and I have some real concerns about that. I guess my first thing would be, what will be the impact of a trail on wildlife and the current agriculture which we have out there? And we now have a complete natural wildlife and agriculture setting, wildlife and ag do pretty well together. I think we're true stewards of the land. But if you enter into this, who suffers with a trail which involves people, dogs, and bicyclists? Well, we've got an osprey nest out there, the eagles nest down our parcel we still have, other birds, wildlife, and the agriculture producer. In order to put this trail in, my understanding is that there'll have to be a raised trail, there'll have to be culverts installed to carry the tailwater from our irrigation, and I would assume this is pretty costly. And I just have a real problem with things trying to be changed. I'm not anti-people being out around there. We have a natural setting. Currently, our roads are deplorable. Road 28 is horrible, Road 26 is bad. We have all kinds of people out there in the summertime. The dust pollution is like an Abrams M1 tank going down, or you can't see. And my suggestion is, we have a lot of bird watchers coming up to too. I have a suggestion that, that money we put into asphalt in 26, 28, and Road 5, so there's a better access around the reservoir, improve the facilities at the east end, where we have a lot of people come to. There are bird watchers there all the time, and everybody out there will slow down for them. And I would say, get some turnouts for them, cater maybe a little bit to that deal. Not everybody's 35 and 41 to jog and ride their bike. So there are a lot of trails, and I would just wish that the council would really look into what the impact of a trail around Union Reservoir would be. As far as ag is concerned, you know, you're supposedly to have your dogs on leash, you're coming down with a corn chopper, and somebody's dog's out in the field. Who's going to control that dog? We're spraying, somebody's out there, who's going to do that? That particular farm, everything on it goes across the road to the Dochev Dairy, so it's a productive producing farm. I would just ask the council to really consider what they're talking about doing. I'm not against trails. We have a lot of trails, if you look at the backup there. Why don't we just keep a natural setting like it is? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gail Kelly, followed by Tammy Wakecock.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Gail Kelly. I live at 1670 County Road 28 in Longmont. I want to reiterate what Larry just said, he's my neighbor. I live about 25 feet from County Road 28. I'm right on the road, the roads are deplorable. I have to, we spray magchloride along the roads. You guys don't maintain them, you don't do anything with the roads there. And it is frustrating from that point of view, the trail makes no sense when you're talking about the animals that want to go around there. We have, I bet, in the summertime, you will see, at any one time during the week, five vehicles, minimum, parked along 28, watching the birds, watching the eagles, the osprey, whatever, the, all the wildlife. It's a great place to live. I want to die in our house there. And I just, I really think that you need to really consider, you don't take care of the roads out there, yet you want to put a path around there. Makes no sense to me. Let's see. I guess that's all I want to say. Please, either, if you're going to put a path around there, take care of the roads too. And I want to also know, what is the access to the paths? Is it just going to be on the, on the south end? Is it going to be paths through? I mean, they stop at our property all the time, the bird watchers wanting to see the eagles flying around. And where are the paths going to be to it? If you had pull-offs from 28 for the bird watchers to stop and park, see where they're looking, see the birds flying around, it's, it's wonderful. I wave to them all the time when they're parked there, but they're parked right along the road. They have no pull-offs, no way to watch the birds. Those are bird watchers that will not use the path because they have these huge telescope cameras that they're, they're taking pictures of the, of the wildlife. They probably will not use the path, they still want to do, they want to have closer access. They're elderly people, I see quite a few elderly people out there watching the birds. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Tammy Wakecock, followed by Joe Dochef. Dochev, yeah. Joe Dochev.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Wakecock. I live at 1450 Well County Road 28. So I am definitely impacted. Unfortunately, I only found out about, evidently Notice did not go out about this proposal that's coming up, so I just found out about it today. So I'm going to be unfortunately very brief, but I have four major concerns. The path would definitely go right in front of my house. So security, since I'm, consider myself living out in the country, is certainly a concern for me. The cost, like they said, they're talking about the cost of this path, and yet there is a road. I have, within the last, I'm going to say six years, I have pulled four cars out of the road, then there's a ditch, and then my house. Four cars have crashed there from, from the road being so, help, what do you call that? You know, you know what it is anyway. Washboarded, yes. And people were injured, the police have been called, ambulance have been called. So here we're looking at a terrible, terrible roads. So cost and the wildlife, every year, the pelicans come right down to the lake, and I have just front row view of those pelicans. I don't even mow unless they're out feeding because I have concern for, and they no longer would be there. I think, I think very briefly, I really have concern about this process. So thank you, and I hope you'll consider it. Consider not.
Thank you. Joe Dochev, followed by Jeff Thompson.
Joe is not here. He was going to be down here, but he's caught while we haul a load of hickory.
All right, thank you. All right, Jeff Thompson.
Jeff Thompson, 1616 Summer Street. I think to start off, I just got to take the time to say that Mayor Coombs, in my opinion, you're probably going to be, or already approved that you are the best mayor that Longmont has ever had. Because what you did has never been done in Longmont before, making sure that the whole picture of this fracking issue could be seen. Usually, all we see is just a very limited side of an issue that's presented by Gordon Pedro's staff for the purpose of manipulating the City Council and manipulating the public. And you made sure that, that we got to see the whole picture, which is the only way we can see the truth about the issue. So thank you. I think it's ridiculous for the City Council to be, to be even considering that Union Reservoir master plan tonight while it's still considering doing something that would encourage this fracking boom, because that, like allowing the seismic testing, because the fracking boom would make the reservoir unfit for any kind of recreational purpose. That's just ridiculous, and I don't think Gordon Pedro is sincerely, or in making any kind of good faith effort on regulation of this fracking because he's presented no work plan tonight, and you were telling him to get this done two weeks ago. Now, the third point I want to make is that next week, the city staff is going to come to you and ask you for more money for the Windy Gap Project. For three years, they've been playing a game with the City Council and with the public of rope and dope, of saying, well, we don't know how much water we need, so we're just going to stay in this project and keep financing this project, as if we have a really high level of participation because we're going to need a lot of water for this project. Before the City Council puts any more money into this water project, make sure that you don't act just... don't act just on the half truths that you're getting out of Gordon Pedro. Make sure that you see the whole plan, and you will see that, that Longmont does not need that project. All I'm asking is that you finally get, do what the city council has never done, and get the facts out on the table, and, and you will see that the Windy Gap firming project is just one of Gordon Pedro's con games to take our money and hand it over to private personal profits. This is public invited to be heard, and if, if you will read the city council rules, it says I can talk about any subject.
Point of order, Mayor. We have in our, we have our rules or procedure that says that we will not attack, you know, decorum when public invited to be heard, for members of council, the residents that have the right to speak, and also for the members of the staff. Personal attacks is not, are not appropriate. I don't, you know, I understand people are passionate about issues, but personal attacks are not appropriate.
Go ahead, we'll let you respond to that, but please don't, just don't take it personal to, I mean, don't personally attack people publicly.
I don't think I have personally attacked anybody publicly. All I've done is exercise my right to free speech. If you're going to have public invited to be heard, we should be able to express ourselves. And I don't see how other, you know, if I don't feel that he's making a good faith effort on something, how else am I supposed to express that? That's not a personal attack. And if I think he's, he's running a con game on the people of Longmont, how can I express that any other way when my time is so limited?
Thank you. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. According to our rules or procedure, those attending council meetings shall refrain from disruptive, vulgar, and abusive language, applause, heckling, and other actions that may interfere with the orderly function of the council.
The final public invited to be heard is Strider Binstone.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, and City Council, Strider Binstone, 951 Seventeenth Avenue. I would like to thank the city for actually scraping some of the snow and ice and crud out of the bike lanes. I know that some people call that socialism, but it really helps if you're trying to ride a bike in the wintertime. The entire purpose of society is to promote the health and well-being of society. But the Iron Lady, Maggie Thatcher, said there is no such thing as society. I guess that's why she went to Azerbaijan and was the bag lady and carried $30 million in cash to hand to the president of Azerbaijan as a agent for British Petroleum, who took over the government of Azerbaijan, kicked out their democratically elected president, put in a Stalinist KGB dictator, and got the contract of the century to explore for oil in the Caspian Sea. Well, what did they find? They found a big methane blowout, exactly like the one they did in the Gulf. But of course BP lied to the United States government, oh, we didn't know anything, we never saw anything like that before. Well, they had the exact same circumstance in the Caspian a few years earlier. Now, as of today, BP is suing Halliburton for faulty concrete. Well, Halliburton always uses faulty concrete because it's cheaper, and they use the exact same concrete, concrete in the well that they dug in the Caspian Sea, which also blew out. So a little bit of understanding about how the game is played. Youngstown, Ohio has had 11 earthquakes in the last 10 months, most likely created by fracking, much of it over in Pennsylvania, 13 to 15 miles away. They had a four-point earthquake on Saturday, shook the buildings, people felt it 40 miles away, 9,000 feet deep, 2,000 feet below the water level, and it's polluting the water. The, the regulators ordered them to stop pumping water under there, but they say the plates are sliding because pumping all of those millions of gallons of high-pressured poison water is lubricating the plates and creating earthquakes, just like in Arkansas and Oklahoma and Texas and Colorado. Thank you, City Council, for your consideration and your unanimous vote to put a moratorium on the fracking and let's know what we're doing before we make a tragic error.
Thank you, Strider. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public invited to be heard. I think before we get to our special reports, I've had a long conversation with Michael Cocoli about the veterans' proposed 90-day pass, and we're talking about 10 to 20 at most people using that, and I think it would be a good way to help them be integrated back into society. I mean, it's better to have them down at the gym than it might be to hang out at some bar drinking, but I don't think it'd really hurt us that much to consider that. And because of that, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to perhaps, to basically have a 90-day pass program for veterans returning from the Gulf. And our, alright, any discussion? Councilwoman Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Have you worked out the details, are these people that will, that have residence in Longmont, I mean, and if they're discharged, then they'll come back to the city right away? Is it a full discharge or they're just back in the states? If they're stationed somewhere else, they're not going to be coming here, you know, to use their 90-day pass? But I don't, I don't know, is it people that, that might be coming back from being on duty if they're on reserve, or, I mean, does it cover the whole gamut of, of people? Do we have any idea, you know, if they don't want to utilize it in the first 90 days that they come back? Can they do it anytime within the first year? Have we worked out some details?
Michael, could you step forward and maybe answer some questions for us?
My intention was that they would be demobilized from the service and moving right back into town where they came out of, you know, like high school people, for instance, who've joined up, and now they're coming back and they're going to try to start over again. We, any, we can go to the rec center manager, for instance, and work out all these details. They'll show the military DD 214 form that shows they have an honorable discharge and they're in a Longmont address. And if you want to, for instance, tell Marie Tostada, you know, leave some information with her, I could pick that information up and go to the rec center manager, and he, you know, they can tell us how they'd like to handle it.
Gordon.
Mayor and council, I would just say that if you direct us to implement such a thing, we will put the details together and bring back the draft so that you'll know how we're going to operate it.
Alright, I guess we'll, we'll direct you then to come up with the design of the program and the details. Councilman Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The only thing that came to mind, I think it's a great idea, and the only thing is, I noticed that, I don't know what we could do as far as parade goes, et cetera, I understand that might not be possible, but I'd like to see language in there expressing gratitude to our troops that are coming home. And I don't, I mean, a mini parade at the rec center, meaning every day they go is a parade. You know, some, just something that shows our, our council's appreciation for their efforts in the verbiage would be nice.
Councilmember Witt.
And I also think this is a great idea. Thank you, Gordon, for being able to put, put something together. And, you know, I do know that something's working its way through the system right now, talking about a veterans memorial over at Roosevelt Park, so something to do with flags, which, so let's keep that in mind for later.
Okay, so I guess seen order discussion, shall we vote on the motion? Okay, the motion passes, seven to zero, so we're instructing Gordon to direct staff to implement a program.
Hey Mayor, we do not have any special reports tonight. The next item is 5A, which is the Northwest Rail Corridor update, and Phil will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city of Longmont. We're also with the economic development department, so just want to state that as well. I've been sending you a number of emails over the last month, my apologies, but it's all been related to the Northwest Rail Corridor and some new information we've received from RTD. So I wanted to come to you tonight to do some of the update in person rather than through email, and then also ask you a few things just to remember that, please don't shoot the messenger on this one. I'm, we certainly have this information from RTD, so what we'd like to do is eventually have RTD come here, explain what's going on with the whole program. This again is an update, it's going to be very useful, I think, to the mayor who represents the city on a number of boards and, and different groups, including the US 36 Mayors and Commissioners Coalition and the North Area Transit Alliance, during, during these discussions that we need to have about different options that I've put into your packet. The other issue is also that this council meeting tonight will be watched by many on the region, so I, for our friends from Texas, I would say, you know, the eyes of the region are upon us here, so we, we, this will be viewed by, by many folks to kind of find out where Longmont stands on this, and, and so this is a key discussion item there. So the real purpose again is to discuss the options that we've provided from RTD. I'll give you a little bit of background on that too, and provide that direction to the mayor as far as representing these different, when representing on these different groups, representing Longmont. So, you know, the background is, I think, fairly basic. I think we all have a pretty good understanding that in 2004, there was a vote that passed an additional fast tracks tax, 0.4% tax was passed by the entire region. And of that, we were estimating that Longmont's probably paid since the taxes first started being collected in 2005. Longmont, the city itself, has paid about $28 million into that fast tracks pot. Of that, the, RTD is saying that $17 million has, has been allocated or promised to a station in the First and Main area, so they are looking at doing a park and ride and the initial station setup for the, for that area of First and Main. The entire cost was going to be $34 million, so what they've, what they've allocated is that, half of that total amount. In all, the city has probably, if you think of, there's the 0.4 for the fast tracks and the 0.6 for the, for the operating, since 2005, we've probably spent about $70 million, give or take. I'd have to check in with Jim Golden to find out exactly how much, but about $70 million we estimate to RTD since 2005, collection of the 0.1% or the 1% tax. About 43% of the cost for fast tracks are allocated in sales tax bonds, so that's something that's pretty important when we start talking about kind of the future of, of a lot of this and where we want to move forward. The original costs, when we first started talking about the Northwest Corridor, the rail portion of it was going to be about $500 to $600 million. And so that's what we learned, that's what we were told in, in 2005 when the vote came out. Last year, the costs were looked at again, cost increases, and this is all inflated costs, so these are all year of expenditure costs. Last year, the costs were estimated at $896.4 million, or I rounded up to about $900 million of costs for the Northwest Rail portion of the corridor. As of December 6th, and this is kind of where the thing kind of shifts here a little bit, is the costs have now been, basically what happened was, RTD went to Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad and asked for them to do a study, to really drill down on the costs of what it would cost to put the rail into this Northwest Corridor. With their estimates, they have increased the cost by $500 million, so we're up to $1.4 billion, basically, of cost to build the Northwest Rail commuter rail line into Longmont. So obviously, these new costs, these new costs are shocked everyone, and, and we're trying to deal with those, with that issue. With your packet tonight, we've included some options that RTD, these are just initial options then from RTD, to talk about how do we deal with this cost overrun. The first option is to revise the fast track schedule, and I'm really paraphrasing here, a lot of the details are in your packet, but that there would be, basically, there's four different scenarios they can choose from, RTD can choose from, as far as revising the fast track schedule, but they all require us to delay building the Northwest Rail for at least three to five years. So the original idea was that with a tax passing, and then this also assumes that a tax passes in 2012, in November, so that's the way RTD is, is operating with this. So they, they originally said if the tax passes in 2012, they could build the system by 2020. With the new revised fast track schedule and new costs, they think they can build it from 2023 to 2025. Now, without the fast tracks passing, we have to say this too, without the, basically doubling of that 0.4% tax, that would be, the, the RTD is going to ask voters to, we think RTD is going to ask voters to pass in November of this year, that schedule pushes out to 2042. And that's, we don't have any other numbers besides the 2042 number at this time, because RTD is always assuming that that, that tax is going to pass this year. Option number two is accelerate key capital and on-end expenditures within this corridor, so that would build, they would build pieces of the bus rapid transit portion of this corridor. That goes beyond what the Northwest Rail Corridor really is, but it would at least get things moving and get some service to folks in the corridor, and that's what they're looking for. We would get possibly increased bus service, but it's not clear at this time exactly what's on the table for Longmont, besides the construction of the First and Main Park and Ride and Transit Center. So the new, the possibility of new bus service is, is in there, but it would mean a six-month delay for any project that is not currently built. That includes the North Metro Line up through Thornton, it also includes the I-25 line in Aurora, and some southeast and southwest extensions in, in the south region of Denver. The last option on your list, and this is a little daunting, is the number three option, which is removal of the Northwest Rail from fast tracks. And the, so the assumptions there are that the, that that money, the $864 million that's currently allocated for, for this corridor would go into what's called a super BRT. So the idea that there would be expenditures into capital projects that would be BRT that would, would, and, and again, this is not clear from RTD as of yet, but they're talking about different ideas of extending BRT up the diagonal or up US 287 possibly to, to, to provide better bus service to Longmont. So with that, exciting news for the new year, we're just asking you to consider that the, so far the US 36 Corridor, the Mayors and Commissioners Coalition of that group, which the mayor is on, is currently keying in on one option, which is option number two, and they're really looking at the idea of getting some early action items on the list, and with that six-month delay to all of the projects. Basically, the idea there is to spread the pain for all corridors and not having the Northwest Rail Corridor take the entire hit on, on this because of some of the new information from the Burlington Northern Railroad. So with that, I would open it up for any kind of feedback on what you've heard over the last month, and especially with this, these options that have been considered today.
Thank you. Councilmember Levison.
Is this considered the coal in our stocking? Great that we didn't get this right before Christmas, right? So basically, the choice is bad, worse, or worser, right? And when they're talking about the, the project altogether, does this assume single track or? the project altogether, does this assume single-track only? It doesn't, we're not even talking double-track either.
Mayor and councilmember Levison, the Burlington Northern now requires double-track, and that was part of the eight-hundred-and ninety-four million dollars.
So, I guess, you know, all along, I've been saying I might be dead by the time this comes in, and it's looking like it's a distinct possibility. And geez, how long can I live? I gotta figure that out now. I guess every time these numbers change, it thinks, everything seems to get worse for us and not worse or worser for others. Excuse my, my poor English. My feeling is that it really doesn't do Longmont any good for increased BRT on the 36 Corridor, because frankly, you know, if we've got, if the bolt service is cut in a day, doesn't really matter if we can, you know, if we can't get to Boulder to get the increase of the BRT on 36, you know, it's, you know, what do we do? I mean, stand out there with our, our thumb out, maybe? And I think people are rapidly losing patience and confidence with RTD, and I I know there's this idea of sharing the pain, but I don't know whether or not eventually we have to face the reality that they're just going to cut us off. Unless I know that they built what they built so far, and I don't know whether or not there's going to be some political will for them to really pay any attention to people that have been giving, you know, paying into this for so many years and not getting very much in return. So, we're not going to kill the messenger for this, but I don't find any of these, these assumptions, well, their assumption, RTD's assumption that they're going to maintain current schedules. I don't know, we can start laughing now and laugh the rest of the evening about that. I don't know, I'm just really, really frustrated to get this news, and I don't know the best way to, to deal with it, except to say I don't think we want to give up anything at all. I think the only chips we have are really keeping everyone's feet to the fire and, and keeping that coalition of mayors going, and making sure everybody in this northern region, I think there might be a possibility that basically, you know, Thornton gets cut off and, and everybody else on this northern region gets, you know, the short end of the stick. I mean, it's not a very long stick to begin with either, so I don't have very much confidence in, you know, it just seems like every year the numbers continue to grow with, I mean, it's just like BNSF decides they want your first board, then they want your second board. It sounds like some fairy tale out there, but I guess I, I'd like to see that us stay, hang tight with everybody else and see if we can't commit enough political will among all of our northern communities here in partnership to, to stay with trying to get the best we can as far as some service enhancements, if that's possible, and I think RTD is going to have a tough go when they, they come up to Longmont the next time.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wish I could do a Gomer Pyle impersonation. Not too many. Surprise, surprise, surprise. I didn't see another option on there, and that is to get our seventy million dollars back. What's the likelihood?
Doesn't exist.
So, you said that seventeen million that they're allocating towards the station is only half the cost. Where's the other seventeen million coming from?
Mayor and councilmember Samori, the other seventeen million was programmed in with the original cost of the, of the of the total station when it comes in, that's part of that eight-hundred-and-sixty-four, eight-hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars. So, the idea was to pay for basically the park and ride piece of it upfront, and then do the station and the platform as the other half of that piece of it, and whatever kind of utilities and things that needed to go on with that.
So 2042? And if we delay it by another three to five years, what's the guarantee that Burlington Northern's cost won't go up again? I mean, we've asked that question of RTD before, and they kept saying, no, it's not going to increase, no, it's not going to increase, and they swore up and down that they're going to build it and bring it to Longmont. But also, Mr. Kemp is running for office now, and so who's going to represent us and who's going to stand up for Longmont on that board that's going to keep pushing to make sure that it happens? Maybe in our lifetime, maybe not. I just calculated, I'll be ninety-eight by the time the 2042 comes around. Well, I may not even be around here, but so somebody will benefit from it, but I guess my concern is it's been stated before, we have no guarantees, we keep paying into it, and we get drips and drabs of information, but no train. We keep getting derailed. So I would say, no, we, we keep all the monies and we, we hold their feet to the fire. It's like quoting a price when you're a salesperson. If you misquote it, you still got to deliver.
So Mayor, could I ask, does that mean to hold the feet to the fire and, and go with option one, the three to five-year delay, or option two with the MCC's recommendation of trying to accelerate some of those improvements? And obviously, just going to respond on the, the guarantee that Burlington Northern wouldn't increase their estimated cost for making this corridor usable. I think it's important to recognize that this latest estimate for them, from them, is based on thirty percent engineering design, right? So, as you go through a complex construction project, you do estimates at like originally, and then about thirty percent design, and then fifty or seventy percent design, and by seventy percent design, you're really getting close to your real costs, so I think it would be safe to assume at thirty percent design, though it's probably going to go up before it gets finished.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I ride RTD almost every day. I'm a big fan of RTD, but the they're assuming that the tax will pass in November, I think is a bad assumption. What happens when that tax doesn't pass?
Twenty forty-two.
Mayor and councilmember Finley, the, if the tax does not pass, then we're talking about 2042. Obviously, RTD will try other options if the tax doesn't pass in 2012, and probably try to accelerate that in some way, but 2042 is that outside date that we look at with the current projections.
The current funding? Can we request that RTD do come, come to us and answer some questions at some point? It would be nice to talk to them and not beat up the messenger.
We can do that, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It being the holiday season, I kind of feel like we're the buffet. And I don't care that they jacked up the price. Not a big deal. What I care about is that we waited, and we paid our money, and there's like a horde of other people getting their food, and at the end, they come to us, and it sounds like they're, they're preparing us mentally for this statement. We say, well, everyone else got the roast beef, the mashed potatoes and gravy, but what we got left for you guys is hot dogs. And I don't want hot dogs. I don't like hot dogs. I'm not going to accept hot dogs, and I'm going to rebel if there's hot dogs. And I think that, I'm with my fellow council members, I think that the only option we have is to let them know that, I mean, we don't have to sit back and take it. I mean, if we put in money and our, our voters, our tax base, said that this is what the money's going to be used for, we can rely on our staff and our attorney to say, we want our roast beef. And I don't think, I think we need to do more than hold their feet to the fire. I think we should send a message saying, Longmont, we're not going to accept it. If they're thinking that there's going to be like some seventeen million dollar empty building, you think Joe Bassman's upset about fracking, I'll get ticked, Joe. I'll get ticked. I want my train. And if we paid for it, I want to know where the money is. Now, I know you're the messenger, but we as a council, we can, we can do things. If we paid, we should, we should legally take it to them. No ifs, ands, or buts. And I think we should send the message with some type of resolution, a vote, whatever we need to, to say that you know, revise the schedule, whatever you need to do to make it work, but we want our roast beef. It means, if it means, I mean, the six months compared to the three to five wait, that's not an equal share of the pain. That means everybody else takes a slice of the roast beef off, but we still get hot dog.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I've fielded a couple of questions, talking about what is the possibility of Longmont getting out of this special district? Can I have one of, either Gordon or Phil, can you explain what the process would be to get out of Fast Tracks?
Mayor, it's my understanding that there is not a way to get out of Fast Tracks at this time. It was a regional vote, and we're in it as a region, and for the original vote and the funds that are coming in, they're partially bonded, so there have been covenants made to see that the, all the revenue from sales tax from that district goes to pay those bonds off. So, it is my understanding there is no getting out of Fast Tracks right now, for anybody in the region. So I do not believe that that's a route that makes a lot of sense to be pursuing, because it does appear that it is not possible.
Thank you. The other thing, I have been in communication with folks in, around the region about, what do you guys think? What do you think? What are you guys saying? And a lot of the, the more Denver folk are saying, what else are you going to do? It feels as if, as many other council members have indicated, this is a project that is too big to fail. We've plowed so many resources into this already, that even though we see that it is not delivering the roast beef like they promised us, it, it's, we have accepted federal funds, and we have, we have so much invested in this, and so it, we really have, we're, we're being asked our opinion on, would you like us to cut off your arm or your leg first? And we're, we're making a lot of analogies here, because we're all just very frustrated with, with what is being proposed. What is RTD, they get their charge from the state legislature, is that correct? Yes? Who, 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 who is in charge of them? Just the, the board, and the board is controlled by the voters, is that correct?
That is correct. The, the board is made up of fifteen members from around the region. Lee Kemp is our board member, as we know, and so they are elected from each of their regions to serve on the board. They are an entity of the state, though, as state legislature, but they can now, they've been approved to be able to run up their own taxes without state approval. They can run the taxes up through the, through their board, so that's what they're planning to do in November.
Right. I, I do just want to throw out this idea, so horrible option number four, or talking about, okay, you can't get us our fast tracks, can't deliver us roast beef. And what is in the best interest of our community? What I've heard a lot of good things about BRT, and it's more adjustable, but if we say, okay, yeah, go ahead, give us BRT, because, because I think it would be useful, it's going to be way better than what we have right now, and it's going to be way better than what we will have until 2042, but then we're allowing them to kick us around. So, I, I want to look into that. I want to see can we get decent service at the very least here in Longmont and be able to get people quickly to where they want to be, but if we do that, then it's going to be seen as a sign of weakness, that we're going to allow mismanagement to be borne on our shoulders.
Mayor, I'd just like to add one other thing about the BRT. The Fast Tracks program, if it were amended via the vote, and Northwest Railroad was taken out, and the BRT system replaced it, the only thing that one would want to be very careful about is that the Fast Tracks funds can be used for capital, which would build you the dedicated lanes and maybe buy you the buses, but there would be no guarantee and no way that you could force RTD to continue to operate buses if they get into a financial crunch like they have the last few years, as they slowly reduced year after year of service. So that is an option that might deserve some consideration, but before it would ever be one that could be accepted as a substitute in a vote, there'd have to be a lot of guarantees in that vote that would mean that there was not a a fast one pulled on a slip.
So, can I ask a question, Gordon? So basically, if we built, did a BRT system, and they built these special lanes, and they bought these buses, but then the ridership in Longmont couldn't support it, then it would just slowly go away, is what you're trying to tell us?
Well, I'm saying that that possibility certainly would exist, because you'd be dependent upon then the fifteen-member board of directors that would be forced to deal with any financial crunch, just like sometimes we all are forced to deal with, and unless you had a guarantee that they weren't going to go for those BRT buses that might not have the ridership that they'd like to have in downtown Denver, they'd probably be cut. That'd be one of the things that would have to be looked at if that option is ever pursued.
Councilmember.
Okay, is, is there an option to force RTD to sell this project to somebody else? To a private company to do this upright? Is that an option?
Mayor and councilmember Witt, basically what they've done with the Northwest Rail piece of it has been to sell it to, they're going to have Burlington Northern operate, build and operate the system. So that's part of the issue. It's all within their right of way, the railroad's right of way, so.
That doesn't appear to be a very good economical solution.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Phil, when did we get the letter? We sent a bunch of questions to RTD. When did we get that letter back from RTD? Do you recall?
Mayor and councilmember Santos, is that from, is that from this recent round of?
No, it's, it's been a while. It was a letter to Mayor Baum regarding, we had some questions, and they sort of responded back to us. Do you remember? Do you recall that?
Yes.
How long ago was that?
It was over a year ago.
Over a year ago.
Maybe two.
It's my place to call into Phil Washington, who's the general manager for RTD, and to Lee Kemp, who is our representative. Heard from Phil. Called me Dave. You probably want to know who you're calling when you gave Santos some, let's say, counsel, but you know, I'll take Dave. Still haven't heard from Lee Kemp. Lee, if you're watching, I'm waiting for that phone call. It just shows me the lack of commitment that RTD has made to Longmont. And Phil, I promised you I wouldn't shoot you, so I'm not going to. It's just been one thing after another. RTD, the original vote was for fast tracks and enhanced bus services. I will always think Gary Hodges for the, on the TBA, the Transportation Advisory Board, always stresses the tax was for enhanced bus services. Former member, councilmembers Blue and Banker both fought to keep lines, lines and routes going here in Longmont with the backing of council to do so. We have, you know, former Mayor Baum did the same thing. I have spoken, all of, council past and present have and are speaking about the lack of commitment that RTD has made to Longmont. And I'm fine with options one and two. Option three is unacceptable. Trigger option three, I want my seventy million dollars back. And if there's not a way to do it, I, I want to find a way to do it. It is unfair to the, to residents of the city of Longmont who voted to pay for this and were promised a commuter rail, not light rail, commuter rail service from here to Boulder to Denver to the airport, and they're not gonna fulfill that promise? Then I want my promissory money back. Seventeen million dollars for a first and main station is not gonna cut it. All I saw of that was just a, here at Longmont, here's, here's some money to quiet you up and, and get you to support a potential tax increase. It's not gonna do it. You know, we, we asked for, the last time we asked RTD, Nadine came, Nadine, Nadine came? She was the only one, if I'm not, and one other lady. And the last time I saw Lee Kemp, trying to think, uh, he came with Phil Washington one other, one other time. You know, from Cal Marcella, who promised us, you know, we're gonna be on track, we've had some funding issues, we all understand the economy went, uh, in the tank. I stood up for RTD and said, hey, it's not their, this isn't their fault. The economy is not good, everyone, sales tax is down, here we go. But then again, every time they come forth, I heard Lee Kemp at the Metro's mayor caucus annual meeting, I'm sorry, not Lee Kemp, uh, Phil Washington, first time I ever saw him. This guy's gonna hopefully get this done. Still, all I'm hearing is excuses and excuses and excuses. It's unacceptable. I would hope, without putting a demand on somebody, because I don't like demands put on me, you know, from anyone, um, except for my wife. You gotta, gotta have that one. But I would hope that Lee Kemp and Phil Washington would come and address this council and this community and tell them why it's one point one four billion dollars more to have FastTrax come to Longmont. I want to hear it from them. You know, Phil, and, you know, I always thank you. I always go to see you and talk to you about FastTrax and what's going on, and, you know, thank you. You've been working very hard on this for a very long time. But it's time for them to address council and this community and explain what is going on. Where's our money? Where is it going? How is it being spent? And if you're gonna do, if they're gonna throw out option three, I want out of RTD. I want my seventy million. This community deserves its seventy million dollars back. And I'll fight them tooth and nail for it.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you. You know, I, I think we, we might need to go down to Denver again. Like we had our little bus trip, van trip down to Denver. We need to make sure that, um, our friends on councils in North Glenn and Thornton and Boulder certainly, I mean, I, I think we have the potential to be the, one of the biggest losers here because enhanced, you know, when I'm looking at accelerating select capital projects under option two, well, those select capital projects could very well, I mean, what are they gonna do for some capital project for Northwest Rail? When whatever they invest in may have to be all dug up and redone if, if it's another twenty years before they build it. I mean, it's gonna be, again, I think we're gonna get the short end of the stick. Um, I'm optimistic that, um, you know, again, if we can join forces and all get down there the same night and make a very strong show from the cities, um, it's not, it's not just us, everybody else is on the end of the line. And, uh, Councilmember Witt, you know, I, I think the, the discussion around, you know, BRT, when the vote was taken, it was really a rail vote, and I think there was a BRT option at that point. And people, you know, decided they wanted to ride the rails and not ride a bus. And, um, I know that, you know, BRT is enormously successful in developing nations in Brazil. In fact, they've got a BRT lane on the bridge over the Bosphorus. It has worked with the political will of the mayor of Istanbul to get, take one car lane out and make it a BRT going both sides, uh, to get people from, from the European continent to, to Asia. And it can be done. However, um, I'm not sure, I, we'd have to see the numbers whether or not, you know, those several hundred million dollars could build those lanes down two eighty-seven. And then when the improvements get done on I-25, that they don't just sell off part of the BRT lane as a toll lane and congest it. You know, it's not gonna do BRT any good if, if they've got a toll road where they're paying for it and, you know, part of it in a different way. You know, certainly I think, you know, BRT has an option of being, um, you know, swifter and, uh, and getting people where they, they need to go. But it would only, it would only depend on money being set aside out of the, the, uh, program to actually fund the operation of it. And, you know, be, uh, we could have the whole rail system built, and they could still decide because of budget cutbacks to get us down to one train in each direction every day. We have the rail. And it, it's gonna be, I think it's just tremendously frustrating, but I think one of the options is to go down there in force and certainly let them know that we will all be there on this night, and they shouldn't change the agenda or cancel the meeting because they know we're coming. So, and I, I think we need to get everybody we, you know, the rest of the posse down there, Thornton, North Glenn, Boulder, Louisville, Lafayette, everybody's gotta be in on it down there. And, um, and we get all that support from this northern region because, um, I-25 is, is really a mess now and it's gonna continue to get worse. And I think that we're all fooling ourselves to think that in the next twenty or thirty years, that the capacity of I-25 and CDOT's ability to maintain that roadway is really going to be, um, at the level that commuters and, and the use is going to be in the future. I mean, it's not, I mean, we're not meeting the, the transportation needs and surface transportation now anyway. My last question is, if Ohio and Florida refuse the high-speed rail money, I still want to know where the heck, I mean, we need as a state to go after every bit of that high-speed federal money that every other state is, on the east coast decides that they want to turn down. And, and I want to see whether or not we can get a share of that, that pie and not let it all go to, to LA to build high-speed rail between, you know, uh, a few, few neighborhoods, uh, up and down the, the California coast.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I just want to point out a few things. I am definitely like my fellow council members against option three. Okay, absolutely, because that's just doing what Councilmember Witt said, which is acquiescing and giving up and being satisfied with nothing. However, I want to point out that number two is even worse. Because number two basically is increasing the funding for bus service for the Northwest Rail and US BRT system, but we maintain the current schedule and we continue to pay in. So one is like, we give up and we say, we're not paying anymore, we'll take the buses. Number two is, we're saying, we'll take the buses, but we're still paying you. And so I agree with my esteemed colleague, Councilmember Levison, that we should probably go down there. Give them a piece of our mind. I'm all for that. I've seen what public invited can be heard can do. Say we give a taste. Um, uh, and so, and the other thing is that, um, so I'm for revising the FastTrax schedule and telling them that they need to do better. Go back to the drawing board. Um, and Gordon Pedro, our beloved city manager, people seem to have one of two opinions of you. They either love you and they say you do a great job, or they hate you and they say that you're so effective at manipulating processes and getting your way. And so regardless, I would actually ask you, with eighteen years of, of city experience, you, you know how to get things done. If you want a train station here, I would actually like to, I mean, again, I'm one seventh, but I'd like to direct staff to come up with a plan to get our train, whether it be council showing up in force, manipulation, threats, public invited be herds, whatever. Not threats, not good? Okay, everything minus public threats. Okay, everything minus public threats. Where we can come up with a plan of action to basically go back and say, oh, the options you're presenting us are not good enough. We, we need to be, we need our city to, to get what was promised to us. Is that possible, Gordon?
No. Mayor, I, I would like to respond a, a bit. And I will always say those who dislike me just are incorrect in their assumptions. But I think that this document shows some actions that the RTD board is going to need to be dealing with in the very near future. And so, uh, and that very near future is January twenty, uh, January twenty-fourth, they are to approve the annual performance evaluation and financial plan for two thousand twelve, which is then lining them up to decide whether they're going to go to the voters in two thousand twelve with a ballot question. So what you have here are some things that we need to be in the position to respond to very quickly. The mayor will be attending the MCC meeting soon. There's a Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting soon. All lining up to get information to the board in January. So we will not have a, an opportunity to come up with some, uh, well-thought-out plan to try to force RTD to get their schedule back because that's just not realistic. I think we need to deal with this immediate, and then we can look for other options and other ways of trying to do it. I do not think at this point that marching down in force is going to be particularly effective between now and January seventeenth, because I do believe we need to be realistic and recognize that some in our region, in the Northwest, might have a higher priority on BRT than they have on rail. And so I am not certain that, uh, in fact, I'm pretty certain that you could not get a unanimous, uh, uh, group of folks from this area to go down and tell RTD that we absolutely want this. Because I think you would end up some saying this and some saying that and some being lukewarm. And we need to deal with those realities in the next thirty days.
So if we're up to you, I know you're seeking direction from us, but you, in this particular instance, staff is, and a few members of council, what would you do?
Well, I believe what we need to have tonight is as clear a direction to the mayor and staff as possible as to how you'd like for us to be positioning the city on these options that are here. And whatever minor nuances that might come about between now and the time that the, the board is dealing with them, and give that general direction so that the mayor and staff can then deal with the meetings that we're gonna be needing to attend in the next few weeks and deal with them with the general support of the council that we know what you'd like to have us do. And I'm, I'm hearing option three, out, so there'd be no way. Option one and two, okay, now do we prefer option one versus option two? Or, or do we go down there with the mayor, understanding that he will assess the situation? And go where he needs to to, to have the best chance of having Longmont come out a winner? Or would you say go down and stand on option one and then go to option two only if that's the only way to do? Or vice versa? I mean, those are the general things that we need and the mayor needs.
I'm, I personally am for option one and only go with option two if absolutely necessary. I don't know if that, how, what that means or how we play it, but that's where I kind of stand.
Councilmember Witt.
I reject the premise. I reject the premise that we have to rubber stamp one of their pre-approved things that they are comfortable in doing. I say, none of the above. I say, give us what you promised. You figure it out, RTD. We, we do not accept any of these. I'm sorry. Renegotiate your contract with the light rail line in Denver. Sell that line to, and use that money to complete what has been promised. The other thing I, I'm kind of thinking is Burlington Northern, okay, if they're the ones who are, suddenly the price is going up, I will promise that I will campaign against a tax increase. And if we got every city council to campaign against a tax increase, let's send a message to whoever is, uh, putting together these things that we are not gonna keep writing checks for this. We are not. We're not gonna keep doing this. I reject the premise. I say, you know what? We don't accept any of these. We want what has, and perhaps that's unrealistic, but it feels as if RTD is just coming to us and giving us this option because these are the things that they are comfortable with. They're, they're not gonna have my support on any of them.
Mayor, I, I'd just like to respond to that, Councilmember Witt. I understand your, your frustration with being given the three options. The, the only thing I will say is much the way that the city council faces at times when a deadline is coming, they're gonna have to make a decision, and they have three or four options under consideration. You know, as much as you try to hear and honor everybody that comes down and speaks before you, if somebody comes down and says, all those options suck, and we don't want you to do any of them, and you have a deadline and you're gonna have to pick one of those options, you sort of just, you just sort of like lose your, your say in the whole process. And I, I'm not sure that that's where we want to be in this regional debate.
Councilmember Levison.
You know, I, I have doubts about, I mean, i- i- if we decide we're just like gonna try to get our marbles, take our marbles home, not play anymore, we end up with absolutely nothing, absolutely nothing to show for it. And then RTD could just decide they're gonna run one bus a day and then have a long one too. You know, they kind of got, you know, they, they kind of have some control here. Um, I don't feel comfortable with option two, um, unless we know what the quote-unquote accelerating select capital projects means. I mean, it could be that, again, none of those select capital projects have anything to do with Longmont. It could be that their select capital projects would be to fix the three or four potholes on two eighty-seven between here and where you turn on fifty-two to go down to I-25, and that's their capital improvement. So they can run a couple more buses and it might be thirty seconds faster to Sixteenth Street. But it's not gonna get us a bus to, um, the airport or even a connection to somewhere that will get us a bus to the airport, um, skyride. Um, and so, uh, I, I really want to see, uh, I trust the thirty-six mayors and commissioners coalition, um, because everybody there has a, has a stake in seeing that things work. And I think it's a little bit dangerous sometimes to say that, you know, we're all gonna go and start, um, like, you know, fighting and, and, um, raising, um, you know, the, the aspect that we're going to campaign against, um, you know, a, a tax and everything, because I, I don't think politically we're in that kind of position to do that. We do have to figure out some way through this, this mind, this political minefield. And certainly I, I don't think that there's going to be a lot of appetite for, um, increasing in taxes anytime, anytime soon. So I think that RTD might get that wake-up call from, you know, reviewing the tape of this meeting and then in general what's happened to, uh, any requests for tax increases, um, in this, in the state recently. So, um, again, um, you know, it, it might be that, um, Councilmember Samori and I, you know, only our coffins go on, um, the, the Northwest Rail. But eventually, you know, somebody we know will ride that rail. And, uh, again, none of the options are good. But I think that, um, you know, one or two, certainly three is, is still awful. But I, I, I want to know what those, um, select projects would be. And, um, I'm gonna trust that the mayor will be in there fighting for those projects that are gonna benefit Longmont. And, um, I think that RTD is gonna have to throw a lot of crumbs around to get anybody to be interested in, um, trusting the credibility of that organization, um, with what their, their cost estimates. And I guess, you know, it's just like, you know, building a light rail system might be like having a wedding. You know, there are always these costs and, you know, you want a chicken and you're gonna end up with hot dogs.
Councilmember Witt.
Alright, so I don't hear anybody wanting to join my revolution, so, fine. But I, I understand that they feel that they have looked at all the options. But as is pointed out, if you don't have a seat at the table, your people are on the menu. And so we absolutely have to come out with a, a very strong stance. And in, I just had a communication from, uh, another elected official from northern Colorado who, who said that, you know, they feel that there's a real push right now. know, they feel that there's a real push right now to do BRT and let go of rail. So, I will go along with, let's say, number one and hope for the best, but I really do think that we are being, we're, as elected officials, I feel that, and present company excluded, I feel that we're, a maze has been built for elected officials. And it is, has been created by people that we really don't know very well, and a certain result is desired. And so, this maze has been built in order to get us to the desired outcome that whoever these people are, that's what they want us to do. So, I'm just, if I had the magic answer, I'd so love to do that, but I feel that as a region, if the elected officials would push back uniformly, and perhaps we are, and I, but uniformly push back and say, "This is unacceptable. I am sorry about the state of finances," and, but there are options that are available that are not being offered up to us.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Guess the question that I would have is why is that the North Rail is the one that's always getting delayed? They have two others that they're building. Why can't they delay those, build hours, and then finish the others? Why isn't that an option on the table?
And Councilmember, the reason why we kind of get the short end of the stick on this one usually is that we are dependent on the Burlington Northern Railroad right-of-way, and no other corridor has that same stipulation. It's, the other corridors all are owned and operated by RTD, and we're the one rail corridor that is beholden to the railroad and what they want to do in their right-of-way.
So, this is like a Kardashian divorce, not a wedding. We don't get the ring back.
You know, I guess we're in a situation here where we have a public-private partnership where the private partner has got a monopoly on us, and it's not a good situation to ever be in. You know, perhaps another option is try to partner with CDO and put the light rail right in the division coming up the diagonal. If there was a way to do it without the railroad, I don't know if that's a possibility, but just throwing an idea out there.
Mayor, members of council, the staffs are looking at different options that include those type of options. So, just to let you know that there, these are three options that RTD has put out there, but they're not the end-all-be-all options. These are, and I think when RTD comes before you, hopefully in the next few weeks, they'll explain that to you as well, that there's, we can come up with options, but they need to be able to review them and have the financial resources to do them.
And Mayor, the other thing about those options is if they're trying to get things lined up for a 2012 vote, they have limited time to suddenly say to the voters, "Well, we'll drop this one, but we'll do a brand-new line someplace else and have any concept of what the actual cost is going to be."
Thank you. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I guess I've got a question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
Assuming that you and possibly the mayor pro tem go down and represent us, perhaps with members of city staff, what would number one look like? When it says revise fast-track schedule assumptions to complete Northwest Rail sooner? What types of arguments and suggestions would be made?
It looks to me like it's going to delay the Northwest Line three to five years if the tax is passed. You know, so we're talking about a 2023, 2025 completion. Is there anything I miss in there?
No, Mayor, I think that's correct. The idea that option number one is just basically a delay.
Yeah.
And I guess the only other, I guess the statement I'd have, the request for our council's leadership and the staff would be that when you go down there, make the argument that if anybody should be first, the end of the line should be, because then you can, I mean, you can use buses, short-term. You know, it makes sense that buses from like point A to B would be better, and then trains from A to Z would be a more effective and efficient use of your resources. And you can also build things in between as your budget permits. And so, I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to see those arguments made strongly.
I think we all understand that we don't want to be the end of the line and get nothing until everything else is all built out, so I, I'll fight.
I respect and admire your wisdom, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Samori?
Well, I guess we need to be careful of the fine print that they have on that under option one, where it says impacts are based on preliminary evaluation and could change based on detailed financial analysis. So, the 2023 to 2025 could become 2042 with detailed financial analysis. So, I don't buy the dates or the assumptions that they have in here at all. They've given us many dates, but they haven't produced anything.
Seeing no other discussion, I think we'd like to take a, go ahead. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Since the discussion's over, Mayor, I just, I've been waiting to do this for quite a People in the Economic Development Department got me into, got me onto something, that Phil Greenwall has been, is now a Certified Transportation Planner. It's a new advanced certification for planners. Phil sat in on the exam for the first time it was offered, and he passed it. He is, at the time, this was back in November, so I've been waiting a long time for this, at the time, Phil was the only, and I'm sure he still is, the only Certified Transportation Planner in the state of Colorado, and only one of fourteen in the United States. So, among his friends and his colleagues, Phil's known as a rock star. So, I just want to congratulate Phil to adding more initials to his last name, after his last name, for Certified Transportation Planner. So, congratulations, Phil. We are very fortunate to have you here on staff.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Thanks for your presentation. And I'd like to take a ten-minute recess.
Two items involve the same area, so Dale Radamaker has a short introduction, and then a specific presentation will be made by Paula and Steve.
Mayor Combs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. And I guess first I want to say it's Happy New Year. I haven't heard that yet too much tonight. These next two items, as Gordon said, are interrelated. They are two major planning efforts that have been underway in the city for a number of years. The longest one that has been in the works is the Union Reservoir Recreation Master Plan, and staff is excited that we have gotten that plan through a public process, not once but twice, and are ready to present that tonight for your consideration and comment and direction. And the interrelationship of that particular project with the Spring Gulch drainage is sort of an exciting opportunity. You know, typically, when the city has done these master plans in the past, we have not had the funding to take it from concept to reality. The difference this time is, which is a good thing and also brings forth controversy, is that we do have the funding to move forward, and primarily that's coming from the open space bonds, that the citizens of Longmont passed and decided to tax themselves expressly for the purpose of these types of projects. And again, you know, the focus on Longmont Strategic Plan, the citizens identified in the environmental direction, completing trails was an important quality-of-life issue for our community. And so, for us, this is sort of an exciting time. I'll also say that whenever you change the status quo, controversy and conversation have to occur. And I very much respect Mr. French. He has been a great... He has been a great person to work with, and especially the Dochev family, and they are great tenants for us out there on the east side of the reservoir. You know, one thing Larry did also mention to me that he did want to make the point that the Sailing Club, he thinks they're a great amenity. He'd like to see more of that. He does want us to be careful and mindful of the trail construction, especially around that east side. I think our challenge is, and this is not new, our challenge is one of balancing the ongoing agricultural production on the property with the construction of a trail with wildlife concerns. And I think we have a plan that Paula and staff have come forward with that, again, at the conceptual level, gets us a long way towards that. Larry also mentioned that they've been very good stewards, and I'll second that, of the land. They have things like grass strips at the bottom of the farm that act as a water filter for the runoff. And I think all those things, to the maximum extent we can, need to be preserved and continued. Larry also had several issues in his letter, things like the road conditions. You know, I guess what I would say to that is that Weld County Road 28 is a dirt road, gravel road if you will. I did commit that the city would look at our grading frequency out there, but I drive the entire length of Road 28 when I either come and go from Longmont. And I believe Longmont is doing a reasonable job, certainly in comparison to Weld County. And I'll admit, gravel roads are not a great thing to live on. They are dusty, they do have all those kinds of things, but we can look at other kinds of situations out there. I would not recommend at this point paving that road. I don't think the traffic counts warrant it, and I think we have far greater pressing needs of our own, you know, the road system, the balance of it in the city. Again, though, a lot of the projects, funding on both of these two projects is coming from the open space bond. It's also coming from other funds, in particular on the Spring Gulch project. That is a multi-use project, and Steve is going to talk more about that, but it is a drainage project. It is also a project that is intended to protect the transportation system into and out of the city along State Highway 119, with that first phase, and a very important critical phase being to get sufficient capacity underneath the highway to keep it from flooding out. And so we have worked hard to look at a range of options on both of these projects. We think they complement each other. I think our challenge going forward is, once we get into the design phase, is to look at how best we can move them forward together to the maximum benefit of our citizens who, again, have approved the taxes to build these types of projects. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Steve Ranswiler, who is the project manager on the Spring Gulch Number Two project.
Thanks Dale. Mayor Combs, councilmembers, my name is Steve Ranswiler. I'm Public Works and Natural Resources Project Manager, and I'm excited to bring to you tonight the Spring Gulch Number Two Drainage and Trail Conceptual Design. We've been working for, I would say a long time, but compared to Union Reservoir, hasn't been that long at all. It's only been about six, seven months. But conceptually, we've been thinking about this for much longer than that. There are two, basically, desires, overall desires for this project, to create a completed missing trail section between Stephen Day Park at the north end to Sandstone Ranch at the southern end. With the completion of the St. Brain Greenway to Sandstone Ranch, this would essentially create a loop from Highway 66 to Golden Ponds that would be uninterrupted, and with just a single at-grade road crossing. The other component is drainage. This project will improve drainage capacity underneath Weld County Road One, as well as Highway 119, as Dale referenced, being able to secure the highway as an exit route in the event of large flooding events. I do have a PowerPoint I wanted to go through, and with that, I can certainly answer questions at any time during this PowerPoint. Like I mentioned, we went through a public process in 2010 identifying and prioritizing missing trail links in the city, and this link was overwhelmingly the most desired link. We created a separate CIP project at that point, D-28, to address this and combine the drainage needs with it. It will serve a large percentage of the population. Right now, northeast Longmont is somewhat segregated from an effective and safe way to get to the St. Brain Greenway and Sandstone Ranch, so this will greatly improve that. As you can see, you know, our overall trail system in the city is pretty expansive and extensive, and you can see in the yellow here to the right of the slide, the extent, about 2.2 miles, which is the length of trail that we are considering at this point, or length of corridor, I should say. We, like I mentioned, we want to talk about the, or address the drainage needs and the trail needs. We feel that this project addresses many city goals, not just drainage, but transportation, recreation, and the open space goals, with the purchase of the Adrian Open Space last year, and what we can do to address the, address any issues associated with that property or improve anything, the way we use that property. Land ownership, you can see in the pink color on your map, the city does own a large portion of the corridor through which this project would travel. The northern and the southern ends are the two portions where it is under private ownership, and we will need to work with private property owners for any improvements we make to those areas. We've already made contact with those property owners and have had discussions, but they've been involved in our public process to this point. Our goals of the trail alignment were really to minimize the impacts to the agricultural uses and private property, minimize costs, optimize recreation, especially connections to Union Reservoir, because the existing uses of Union Reservoir, I'm sure you've seen people crossing County Line Road at Grade and riding down County Line Road on the eastern side to County Road 26 and heading out to Union on bicycles. I've seen it many times in the summer, kids and things, and this will greatly improve the safety and the connectivity of, between the population and the reservoir improvements. And, you know, we want to look at the existing habitat and see what we can do to improve habitat along this corridor. Some obvious conflicts, we have several crossings, County Line Road, the Union Supply Ditch, railroad tracks, Great Western Railroad runs through this, well, bisects this parcel or this corridor, and Highway 119, as was mentioned. So our traditional primary greenway trail section is an eight-foot concrete trail. And one of the questions that was proposed during the public process and something we want to consider tonight is what this trail's cross-section should look like. This will connect into the St. Brain Greenway through Sandstone Ranch. Both the Transportation Advisory Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did recommend to council approving this alignment for the trail and the improvements with a 10-foot wide concrete and three-foot crusher fines edge cross-section, which is what we use on the St. Brain Greenway. The addition of those two, the widening of the concrete and the addition of the crusher fines edge, would add approximately $120,000 to the entire length of the trail, the overall length. I don't have an overall cost estimate, but I'm guessing we're in the four and a half to five million dollar range at this point. We haven't really finished the preliminary engineering, so that's the additional cost that we would see, and we are hoping to get some direction from council on that tonight. As conveyed in the council communication, we've divided this up into several sections. This is upstream of Weld County Road One through private property, south of Stephen Day Park. We want to try to improve the wetlands habitat up there, try to do what we can to improve habitat. It's a pretty barren piece of property at this point, and then make the connections to Stephen Day Park Trail and County Line Road, and going underneath County Line Road. The goal of the project is remove County Line from the 10-year storm event. Just downstream of County Line into the Adrian Open Space, there is a section of land there that is not very well agriculturally used. Right now, there's a little bit of, I think part of it's being used for cattle grazing, but it's not being planted right now because there's not a very good way to get water to it. What we would like to do is try to take advantage of that and take it out of ag, any sort of ag production, improve the habitat, excavate it out, and have multi-deaths of water to encourage wildlife and plant life in that area. The third section is the connection out to Union Reservoir. As I mentioned, that's a very important connection that we need to address with this design. The fourth section is south of Union Reservoir. You can see that this trail design does move east of the Adrian Open Space. We felt that south of the Union Supply Ditch, it didn't make a lot of sense to bisect the agricultural operations through the open space, and so we've shifted over to the eastern side of that through some of the open space and some of the land that's been purchased in the past by the water fund for the expansion of Union Reservoir. Section five is south of railroad tracks. We have met with the PUC and have had preliminary discussions about an at-grade crossing. We still had the opportunity to pursue that. Once we do some more preliminary engineering, it may not be cost-effective because of what the PUC would require for a cost, or a grade, I'm sorry, an at-grade crossing. So we may be looking at a grade-separated crossing at that point, but that's something we'll know more about once we do some more engineering. If we were to pursue an at-grade crossing, you would need to variance from the PUC, and there has not at this point been a municipality in the state that has gone through the entire variance process to even get to the PUC for a decision, so Durango was the closest, and they have not, they withdrew their application for other reasons not related to the PUC. But it doesn't sound promising, but it's something, if it makes it so the project is more cost-effective, short-term, it's something we would look at pursuing. And then the last section is on the private property, south of the railroad tracks, just north of Highway 119. You can see that we would be bringing pedestrians underneath the highway, as well as improving the capacity on the road to pass the 100-year storm. We're looking at every opportunity to improve habitat through this corridor, using native plants and using agricultural water where possible, natural, or I should say, raw water where possible, to irrigate whatever plants we install, and then, you know, enhancing the natural corridor along Spring Gulch, because it is an obvious corridor for wildlife movement through this area. And one of the concepts we came up with is actually not along the trail edge, but through the agricultural open space. Dale alluded to the way Mr. French is working the agriculture on the eastern side of the reservoir with a grass buffer on the downhill side of his crops, and this is something that we feel could be an improvement through the Adrian Open Spaces, to widen the native area between, on each side of the gulch, between the crops and the gulch, to try to cleanse some of that water, the runoff, from the ag field before it gets into Spring Gulch. And we have, we are working on initiating testing of the water at certain areas along Spring Gulch Number Two right now, so if and when we make improvements in the future, we would have some before data to make some comparisons and see what's effective and what hasn't been so effective. And with that, I would turn it over to questions. I mentioned that we were hoping for a little bit of direction for the cross-section of the trail and the overall conceptual alignment. I can mention real quickly that we are, with this decision tonight, we'll be moving forward with 30% conceptual design and design of Phase One, which is the underpass and drainage improvements at Highway 119. That work will be done this year and out to bid hopefully this fall. And we have, right now, in the current CIP, have 2.1 million budgeted in 2012 and another 2.2 in 2013 toward this project. Once the 30% design is done, we'll be able to break it up into phases, and we'll know more about what direction we'll be going with the balance of that money beyond the highway improvements.
So could you explain to me again the trail cross-section? You have an eight to 10 concrete, and then you've got crushed trail alongside that, that's three feet wide, that's your desired? What was your baseline?
The baseline is, Mayor Combs, the baseline is eight foot. That's our standard primary greenway width. We will see along greenways other than the St. Brain Greenway throughout the city, it's an eight-foot wide concrete trail. The St. Brain Greenway has used a 10-foot wide concrete trail with a three-foot crusher fines edge. The 10-foot wide trail allows for more width for greater capacity. We anticipate a lot of use of this trail, and the crusher fines edge is a user-friendly jogging equestrian walking surface.
So is another option, could be like an eight-foot wide concrete and three crusher? I mean, it was either eight-foot concrete with no crusher or 10-foot and a three. How about an eight-foot and a three? Is that a possibility?
Mayor Combs, that's definitely a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
To break, I believe I have some information here, breaking up that number, the concrete addition would be approximately 75,000 to 85,000, and the crusher fines would be about $35,000.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So it's going to cost 2.1 million, right?
Mayor Combs, that's just what we have for Phase, I'm sorry, for 2012 in the CIP.
So what's the total cost going from, you know, all the way from the beginning of Section One?
From the beginning to the end, we don't have a cost estimate yet because we haven't done the preliminary engineering, but I'm looking at about four and a half to five million ballpark.
Okay. And then what happens if the property owners to the south and the north don't play ball?
And we'll have to...
So it just, there's just gaps there?
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Bagley, we would have to look at that. We're hoping that we've been able to strategize ways to work with both property owners. There have been initial discussions about a trail corridor and utility corridor with the property owner to the north of the project. To the south is property that is not yet developed, but already annexed in and obligated to build primary greenway in the future, and we've made that contact with them, and hopefully they'll be understanding that if we upfront the costs of those improvements along that corridor, then it wouldn't impact the development of their land in the future, and we'd hopefully be of benefit to them.
On a personal note, I'd like to, at some point, I would like to see a different area of the city on maps. I mean, it would be nice to get away from County Road One, just on my input. And the reason I ask is the one thing that's not in the report, that's kind of like the elephant in the corner to me, is I believe top operating owns the land of the north.
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Bagley, you're correct, yes.
So I'm curious what it's been like with the moratorium dealing with them since that? Just what, I mean, is it...
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Bagley, there hasn't been any conversations with relation to this project since the moratorium was announced, to my knowledge.
Okay, so as far as you're concerned, just kind of business as normal?
Right. All right, cool. Thanks.
Any other council? Councilmember Levinson.
Steve, thanks for coming tonight and giving us this information. I'm curious, how does this trail help water quality? The water quality was one of your bullet points, so tell me how that improves water quality. Talking about ditch water quality, runoff water quality, which water quality, where's the water going?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Levinson, a little bit of both, actually. The cross-section I had shown with the buffer from the agricultural fields in Spring Gulch would improve the runoff water quality. The improvements that we make when grading the trail allows us opportunities to be doing more restorative plantings, different plant types and different plant families, to try to cleanse the water as it's moving through the gulch, as well as water that runs off from adjacent properties into the gulch. So we'd be doing that through plant life and grading to slow the water down and giving it more time to be treated.
And the first water quality was water that would be going into the runoff from ag that would be going into the ditch or into the reservoir?
Into the ditch.
Into the ditch, okay. And then if we have not, I'm sorry, my voice is getting worse this evening. If there's not been a success with track record with at-grade crossings with PUC, how much more will it add? Do we have a guesstimate? You know, I'm assuming it would, a grade differentiation crossing would mean the trail would go underneath. It's not like we're going to build a massive overpass and like a two double-decker car, train to go, and you're going up a switchback of concrete to get over the train, but it's going to go underneath. I mean, potentially, isn't that going to throw a big monkey wrench into your engineering? Because when you talk about water quality, you're going to end up with this kind of a funnel effect if you're going to be going under the railroad track at that point, so we're going to have to, you know, keep re-engineering everything constantly for that section.
Mayor Combs, Councilmember Levinson, you know, there has been talk in the past about Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, you know, there has been talk in the past about an entry feature, arches into the city of Longmont coming from the east. And so we thought maybe we created these huge arches over the railroad and the highway. We might be some sort of feature.
Rolled-in arches, no doubt.
Yes, there you go, there you go. Seriously, the preliminary cost estimates that our engineers have put together, based on the requirements that the PUC listed, and, you know, we can certainly ask for variances from them, what they listed was approximately $300,000 for an at-grade crossing. And that's for when the tracks are not in use, which currently they're not in use. Once the tracks become in a greater level of use, as the railroad envisions them being used in the future, the PUC might require us to build an underpass in the future anyway. Of that 300,000, probably zero of those dollars would be able to be reused. So we would be looking at about a half-million-dollar underpass. So right now, it's looking like it's a logical direction to move toward the underpass, but I believe that we need to look at that a little bit more closely, just because right now the railroad's not being used at all.
And then one thing I've never understood in the development of this project is, why would the city of Longmont, when Highway 119 is a CDOT-maintained road? I understand the theory that, you know, big flood, we want a roadway to get out of town. But why would we, I mean, disaster relief is going to come in and, you know, why would we be spending such a hunk of money to protect a roadway that the maintenance of it, you know, FEMA's going to come in or CDOT's going to come in and it's really their road, their responsibility? Why would we be going to such Herculean efforts to protect their roadway from topping over?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, Nick is here to answer that. If you want more information, but I do know that we are working right now, I'm also co-manager of the Left-Hand Flood Control Project, which we are improving Highway 287 to accommodate floodwaters from going under that road as well. I believe that it's our water that's coming through there. And so we do have some responsibility to make sure that it goes underneath the road. And I'm not sure what our agreement with CDOT is as far as maintenance on that.
I'm just wondering if CDOT would ever kick in any money. I imagine Mr. Wolfman's going to give me all that information.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Members Council, Nick Wolfman, Engineering Services Manager. We've talked to CDOT in the past about this project. They don't have funding available for this at this point in time. One of the, one of the primary reasons that we're doing this conceptual design of this project, though, is when you look at the CIP and the CIP sheet is included in your packet, it's a partially funded project. By getting this design worked on, we can start to get a better idea of what the final costs are and make determinations of are there ways that we can go out and get grants, whether it's trail grants, whether it's Dr. Cog tip funding, or other applications that we can go after for that. But at this point in time, they don't. Part of the other issue for us is, is the additional box culverts that we put under the roadway not only carry those flows, but then also create that pedestrian underpass link that we need as part of it. So there's, 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 part of that is a benefit to us as far as the desire that we're having for that grade-separated pedestrian bicycle connection through there that is a portion of that.
And I guess that it's nice to think about where this, this project would be phased, but I don't know if we want to phase it with the biggest costs upfront, you know, with the construction still down, whether we get our best bang for our buck with pricing being still relatively lower right now because of less construction activity. So, you know, it's probably a better idea to get the biggest chunk of the construction worked on when prices are somewhat lower for materials and labor.
And we are still seeing good. We've been fortunate to continue to see good bids and taking advantage of a bad economy.
Okay, thank you very much for answering the questions.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. How's it going? Looking for direction about the cross-sections. I have no problem going 10-foot with the three. So, you know, I'll move that, you know? Go ahead and go with the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and Transportation Advisory Board, that we go concrete width to 10 feet wide. And then we add the additional crusher to it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Councilmember Witt.
Just a follow-up to Councilmember Levinson's question referring to FEMA. I was able to attend a training on emergency management and FEMA doesn't come in and help you out until you've totally exhausted every resource you have. So that's, that's the reason why we want to do preventive maintenance now.
Okay, we've got a motion that's been seconded. And the motion is to go with a 10-foot concrete path, path and a three-foot crusher. All in favor? Okay, your direction is, it's been passed seven to zero, so we'll go with the 10-foot wide path with the three-foot crusher.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm, am I wrong to assume that you, the council is also supportive of the conceptual design as presented?
Yes. I think so. Councilmembers Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I am. Because the, it's the question I get quite often is, when can we get to Sandstone Ranch? I live, I live over off of Mountain View in Pace, so it's a question I get constantly. When can we get to Sandstone Ranch? And, you know, again, I'll have to throw my wife under the bed, I get that question from her quite often, about when can we get to Sandstone Ranch? And I keep saying, it's coming. And this is, I'm glad to see the conceptual plans are here and it's, we're finally moving forward with it. So, nice work.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. I guess, since we were just talking about RTD and conceptual plans and how they're telling us they're, you know, 30% design, and now you're telling us 30% design, can you give us an update in a few months when you get more design work done? I'm especially concerned about that price tag of a half-a-million dollars to go under the railroad. I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot of green, you know, along the greenway. And I, I just, I just think that's pretty high to get underneath a railroad track. So if we can get, you know, a little bit tighter on those estimates about what we can do and how we're going to spend the money to phase it, then I would just like that information and update if you don't mind.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, that's not a problem at all. I agree that those are preliminary numbers. I can say that the underpasses that we've built recently are coming in the 300 to 375 range. And so with the railroad going over top of it, there are some additional complications and requirements that need to be met. So it may not be too far off, but yeah, as soon as we get some preliminary numbers put together, as well as a proposed phasing, I certainly would be happy to provide your information item and get some feedback on that.
Hey, Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just, I want to reiterate that it might be a good idea to approach Top Operating and they've lost a lot of goodwill in the community. And I don't know if you guys have thought about just showing up and using that particular area to maybe gain some of that goodwill back. It's a huge piece of land. I don't know what the city's policy is in accepting those kinds of, I don't know, gifts, uses, et cetera. But it's a, I don't know how much money we could save if we could somehow just ask them to be able to use that land. And maybe, like I said, it's the same area, it's the same map, maybe be able to tie two issues together in order to, you know, appease some of the public.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, that's fine, we can do that. I know that the conversations with Top Operating are ongoing on a number of different levels. The, some of the proposed wells that have been discussed, we have reflected and are outside of where we're planning on doing improvements for this project. We have been taking that into account, but I'm sure we can approach Top and see what they're, what they're willing to do.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
No applause?
Hi.
Hello.
Mayor Coombs, Council. My name is Paula Fitzgerald, and I'm going to apologize right up front because I have a cough, I have my cough drops. But we will see how I do with this presentation. And I do have backup here in case I can't keep it stifled. So I am very excited to be here tonight. You've heard that this is a rather infamous project. It has been going on for some time. But we're very excited to be able to present to you the Union Reservoir Recreational Master Plan. And to start, I'd first like to recognize the many groups and individuals who've participated in this plan and spent many, many hours with us, working through the details of the plan over the past several years. And a couple of those folks are here in the audience tonight, so thank you very much for that. And also to the city staff, we've run this through the city staff review process on several occasions, and I think the plan has benefited a lot by their input. So I also have a master, or PowerPoint? All right, so for the benefit of the new council members, I'd like to give a quick background to the project. So to begin, I'll start with a few of the highlights. Back in 1986, a bond was issued where the city purchased controlling interests in the reservoir company, as well as obtaining an enlargement decree for its expansion. In 1989, a recreational master plan was first completed for the reservoir. And here's an example of that master plan. So although it was very simple, it included a loop trail and the main park area on the southeastern corner of the reservoir. So keep that in mind when you look at the further plans, because you'll see those elements reappear. In, whoops, in 1997, the mixed-use development zone was adopted by Weld County, which included unincorporated lands surrounding the reservoir. And an intergovernmental agreement between Longmont and Weld County was adopted in 2002, which gave the city priority over annexation of lands within the mixed-use development zone. In 2005, the West Union Development requested and obtained city council approval to proceed with its annexation request. But city council also directed a comprehensive planning effort for the lands surrounding the reservoir in Weld County. So the West Union Development was put on hold until in part a recreational master plan could also be complete. So council had directed the study of recreational opportunities for this development so that the city could lead the process to decide what is preferred in those amenities, rather than just reacting to what West Union would propose. So our master planning work then began in 2007 with an extensive public input process conducted through the summer and fall months. And a Parks and Recreation Board meeting was held in November of that year. Council was updated on that project in November, or in December of that year, but the plan was never adopted. The project was put on hold when it became evident that there were several properties that might, the city might have the opportunity to purchase space that was included in the West Union plans. So those purchases did occur with the Adrian property purchased in 2009, followed by the Bogot property purchased in 2010. Open space, water and street funds were used to jointly purchase these properties consistent with their funding objectives. In 2010, an open space bond was sold, as Dale had mentioned, making money available for open space acquisitions and trail and district park development. 2010 was also the year when Longmont and Firestone were engaged in a lawsuit over annexation of lands near the reservoir, which was ultimately resolved. This map shows the basic land uses and jurisdictions surrounding the reservoir. So the dark blue around the reservoir are lands purchased with the Water Fund to prepare for the future reservoir expansion, while the dark green are open space and parklands. The Town of Mead planning area is shown in light purple and Firestone's planning area is shown in pink. So with these changes in mind, staff reconvened the recreational master plan process, beginning with a new natural resources and habitat assessment done in May of 2011, and also came back to council with an update that same month. So as you're aware, last year Engineering Services, as Steve just mentioned, also was working on the Spring Gulch Master Plan. In 2011, work on the recreational master plan, it was clear that there were several changed conditions since the work that was done in 2007. So these include city ownership of lands west of the reservoir, the Firestone planning area expansion and annexations nearby, a city large events policy for the reservoir, a change in camping demands, which was presumed in part to be due to improvements made at St. Rain State Park nearby. And then finally, the sale of 1.7 million in open space bonds to be used for this and other projects. In our meeting with council in May 2011, we also asked for confirmation of the underlying project assumptions. Council clarified those to include that we would assume that there would be the 13-foot water level raise with the reservoir expansion at some point in the future, and that wakeless boating would continue. The environmental work done in 2011 was an update and comparison to previous studies. Four species of special concern or state threatened species were identified. Species of concern include the bald eagle, the black-tailed prairie dog, and the northern leopard frog. The threatened species is the burrowing owl. The bald eagle does have potential habitat around the reservoir, but currently uses trees in that area only as hunting perches. No overnight roosting is known to occur. And this is a change from what we believed was the assumption back in 2007. The burrowing owl is again considered threatened by the state of Colorado. They nest in prairie dog burrows, and since we have known prairie dog colonies active around the reservoir, we know that they have potential habitat there. We did conduct a burrowing owl survey last year and no owls were found, but they could occupy those burrows at any time, so we do need to continually survey, and especially prior to development. The northern leopard frog is a species of concern with potential habitat in ditches and along the reservoir edges. And finally, the black-tailed prairie dog is a species of concern with known colonies active in, along the reservoir as well. So our consultants also did a database, database review of raptors and migratory birds and found that there are 199 species that have been observed at Union Reservoir. And 40 of those species are known to nest regularly at Union. The osprey is the only raptor with a nest at Union Reservoir. Our environmental consultants also reviewed the previous master plan and provided recommendations to us to enhance that plan. They suggested signs and fences along with bird blinds for wildlife protection and enhanced viewing along the west side of the reservoir. They suggested using native plants and to develop a site-specific prairie dog management plan for the south side of the reservoir. They confirmed that the existing osprey nest requires a quarter-mile buffer or a nest relocation when unoccupied on the east perimeter of the reservoir. And along the north side of the reservoir, they recommended shoreline protection from waves to mitigate the existing erosion in the area. So their overall recommendation was to do a site-specific wildlife management plan for the area. So we kicked off our public process with a meeting, a public meeting held last June, June 16. And to prepare for that meeting, staff had done some plan revisions to the 2007 plan, including some minor graphic editing, removal of the West Union Development project from the maps, including the parks and marina that were part of their proposed improvements, removal of the eagle roost buffer area, since we have now determined that the site is not used as a roost, and realignment of Weld County Road 26 to now be centered on property lines. So with these plan modifications, we presented the plan at the June meeting, posted the plans along with a survey online on the city's website in both English and Spanish, posted the plans along with paper surveys at various city facilities, including at Union Reservoir, and did an interview with La Le Radio to encourage more response from our Latino residents. So after we collected all the public input from these various venues... So after we collected all the public input from these various venues, staff worked with our previous design consultant to get the changes made to the plans. So at this point, I'd like to give you highlights of that plan. So to begin, we'll look at the overall plan. So as you can see on this map, you'll see the loop trail, which is the kind of gold dotted line surrounding the reservoir, which is a crusher fine soft surface trail. Between the recreation areas, so down here between the southwest and the east area, this would be a concrete with a crusher fines edge, similar to what you just discussed on the Spring Gulch project. Shoreline enhancements to the northeast side of the reservoir up here, and kind of graphically depicted off the map right up in this area, would be included to mitigate wave erosion and provide habitat areas. The plan also reflects a conceptual realignment of Weld County Road 26 and 28 to reflect our best current information on these future plans by both the city and Weld County Transportation Departments. And these are primarily related to the reservoir expansion or just long-term transportation goals. They don't directly relate to the recreational master plan. We've also added an emergency, oops, an emergency access out of the north side of the main day use area, and we've changed the wildlife buffer south of this white dotted line, which is our wildlife zone, to be 150 feet, which is consistent with the city's wildlife management plan. The areas north of that zone, which was determined back in 2007 to be the most critical habitat for wildlife by the Colorado Division Wildlife, would remain at 300-foot buffer. So the east area, then, this site becomes the primary day use area. All existing program uses currently in the southwest or the existing site would then be moved to this location. The main program elements include picnicking, fishing, swim beach, boat launches and rentals, camping for RVs and tents, and the scout circle. We've also added a primary greenway trailhead down in this location, which is off the entry road for the loop trail and just outside the gatehouse for fee transactions and the ranger office. So like all other city primary greenway trails, no fee would be paid to use this loop trail. We have also shifted the entry road slightly to the, from previous plans, to the east and added some additional parking. We've clarified in this area where overflow event parking would occur, and we've slightly enlarged the maintenance building for operations use. We've also moved the alignment of County Road 26 down in this line, again, just to straddle the property lines as best we can. We've added another drop-off for the group picnic area from the main parking lot. Group picnicking area includes a looped walkway, which by public comment, we moved further away from the adjacent private lot right in this location. We've added, we have restrooms, shelters, and a multi-use platform that could be used for small outdoor education and very small event venues. And there's also a small playground in that area. We also relocated the dog beach down to this location. Currently, it is accessed off of the southwestern area, the existing area. And this would have a separate crusher fines trail coming from the fee use area down to the dog beach, because anything that is accessing the reservoir itself is intended to be a fee, fee to be paid for that. The plan also includes a breakwater up in this location, and we've added an offshore mooring area. The breakwater includes picnic shelters up here and an ADA or Americans with Disability Act accessible fishing areas. A fish cleaning station is now located right off the breakwater and on the way back to the parking area. The swim beach and swim area are to the south side of the breakwater in this location and are larger than the existing area. The plans have clarified that there will be a divided swim area for kids, family area versus adults who might want to do more lap-type swimming. Beach lockers, a concession, and a lifeguard building, as well as an open shower and changing screen structure are at the edge of the beach, have been included, along with more shade trees, which was a very strong request by the public. Moving to the north side of this area, we have to the north of the breakwater, the boating area shown. And in that area, paddle boats, including shore racks and lockers, boat slips, rental and ranger launches, and three trailer launches are shown for, for high-volume times. Trailer parking and a drop-off for the paddleboat area are also shown right in this area. A shoreline picnic area is north of the boating area and includes 21 pull-in spots for day use. So that is right in this location right here. The camping area includes 34 RV full hookup spots with a restroom, shower, and fish cleaning area, and a waste stop at the exit entry point. Also, an ADA fishing area is adjacent to the campground. The group camping area, including scout circle, is now to the east of the road for a little more separation. There's also a 32-space tent camping area, including two pull-through spaces. The camp area also includes a restroom, shower, and fish cleaning station, as well as a fishing pier. So added, we also added other minor adjustments from the previously shown plan relating to facility sizes and orientations. And then finally, moving to the southwest area, this again is the current existing recreational area, and now this would become the primary use for leaseholders and club use, except for the event rental building. So boat storage and parking are provided for all functions. The primary greenway trail is again moved to the perimeter of the property to maximize the recreational use area. And the plan has added a trailhead off the entry road and outside the gate. Again, the dog beach, which is currently located down in this area, is moved to the other recreation area. And a driveway down to the shore launch area has been added, and this area includes storage for hand-launched boats and a paddleboat storage for ease of access directly onto the reservoir. A picnic area has also been added to this area. Trailer launch area is provided for larger boats, and now includes a third launch, again, for high-use times for things such as regattas. And this area previously had a floating breakwater out in this area, and again, because of public comment, we've removed that. People felt it was more of a hindrance than a help in terms of bringing boats in and out. The existing remote control areas down south of Weld County Road 26 remain, but they are moved further south because of the road shift. Parking and the restroom are also shown in this area, and the plan has rotated the remote control airplane runway to better provide a clear zone, and has adjusted the parking area because of that. The plan also now reflects a conceptual alignment and linkage to the Spring Gulch number two greenway. And again, as both of these plans develop, we'll work on exactly how those two trail systems link together. So then, as noted in your council communication, staff has prepared the 2012 to 16 CIP with PR-10, which is the Union Reservoir Master Planned Improvement Project, with a funding request for design and construction of Phase One, which is an interim loop trail with design beginning this year, as well as continued design for the overall master plan project to a preliminary level. And again, last fall, council did approve that funding request for the design this year. The interim trail would not be, follow the alignment shown on this plan, as if we moved it out to the ultimate location because of reservoir expansion, we, the trail would be so far away from the reservoir and would interrupt agricultural operations, as well as being inordinately close to several residences, that until that reservoir expansion happens is really kind of unnecessary. The, this trail in most all areas would be constructed with crusher fines material, but while this trail is considered temporary, staff believes it will have reached its full depreciation by the time the reservoir expansion occurs, and at that time, it will move to its permanent location. As Dale mentioned, the project is to be funded from open space bond funds, and during the development of the design for the overall recreation area, other interim projects may be identified that can be constructed prior to reservoir expansion that would not be just money thrown away, but more detailed cost estimates will be generated again during the design. So to conclude, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was presented the plan at their October 10th meeting and recommended approval of the plan. And so at this time, I'd like to ask for council's direction. So we are prepared to bring back a resolution for your adoption of the recreational master plan as shown in this presentation, or we would like to know what changes you might require before you're ready to adopt the plan. So with that, I will open it up for your discussion and any questions.
Councilman Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've just got a couple of questions. I was not paying attention to politics when the big battle happened over the Firestone annexation and whatnot, so I don't want to picket any scabs. But my, my, I guess my concern, and with a question, is if we go ahead and spend $10 million on this project with the Firestone, Weld County, Boulder County, the checkerboard map that we have out there, one, is it likely that we're going to wind up with fracking or other buildings, industrial activities, whatever, as a result of the decisions that Weld County makes? That's question number one. Of course, we don't know, I would presume would be the answer, considering we don't have anything to do with those folks. And then number two would be, what is the possibility of annexing that unincorporated county land around the lake that was not battled before, especially on the north and whatnot, to be able to protect the scenery, the greenery, the beauty? And in the event that we allow retail or whatever in, at least we have a say in it.
Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, I think I will let Gordon answer that, because that kind of gets out of my area. Thank you.
Welcome back, Gordon.
Mayor, I think the answer to the annexation question is, any property owner that requests to be annexed, then the city council has the option to annex if it so desires. If they do not want to be annexed, well then, they're allowed to stay in the county.
So the areas like the Siemens and the Bogot property, Dick, and all that kind of stuff, could they be annexed in? So it's just that simple? Or is there a downside?
If they're, if they're contiguous to our boundaries and they request to be annexed, then it would be analyzed and the council would have discretion as to decide whether to annex them or not.
Do you think there would be benefit in doing that with as much land as possible out there? Or is that something we've been trying to do, not trying to do?
Generally, Mayor and Council, we have annexed properties around the area that's, as requests have come in.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, I am, I don't want to suggest a consultant, or, not at all, but my question is, have you done any type of feasibility study or whatnot as to whether or not people will use these facilities? My concern is, and I don't know, so the question is simply, what kind of water quality is there? Where does the water come from? Is it storm water? Is it dirty water? Clean water? Is it something that people are going to be going to, to swim? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Okay. Mayor Coombs and Councilman Bagley, a couple of things. One, on the annexation question, Adrian property has been annexed, and I believe there's still one more reading on the Bogot property before that's finally annexed. So those projects are moving forward. In terms of feasibility, we did not include a feasibility study with the master plan work. However, we have been doing a fair amount of surveys and discussion with our staff who can attest to the high level of interest and visitation at Union Reservoir with the current very minimal facilities we have out there. I also spent some time at St. Green State Park talking with Kathy Simple, who's the manager out of that facility. And in spite of their upgrades to their campground, they have many, many weekends where they're turning people away. There's actually a growing demand for close-in camping, possibly spurred by the high gas prices. People are less willing to drive further, and so they're looking for opportunities closer to home. And anytime you couple fishing opportunities, camping opportunities, and all the other things that we're showing in this plan, I think we have a regional draw that can certainly attract tourism and out of, out of town, as well as our own residents enjoyment out there. You had one other point, and I'm...
I guess the, maybe it's for you, Mr. Rattlemaker. It's just simply, what's the water quality like? Meaning that I know, I noticed fish cleaning stations and swimming, I've just, I've never thought about going out there and swimming or eating fish out of the reservoir. And so, A, what is the water quality like? And B, do we need to do something to make it a little cleaner if this is going to be really feasible?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, the, the water quality is adequate and sufficient for swimming. We've had a swim beach out there for probably 20 years. Can we and should we always continue to try to improve the quality? Yes. And you know, and in saying that, though, that's a huge task, because, two things. One is, the major drainage way for Union Reservoir is outside the city to the north. And so our ability to control that, if you will, is somewhat limited. I think we can encourage good best management practices in the farming and those kinds of activities to the north. So that's one thing, that I think we're, we are very focused on maintaining the quality out there. The other is, is that the oligarchy ditch is the main feed ditch that fills Union Reservoir that also acts as a storm drainage conveyance system from the city. And so that's incumbent upon all of us, all citizens in the city, especially in the northern areas of the city, to be very diligent on, on water quality issues there. But, you know, it is, it certainly is a fairly popular swim beach right now. I, I think that can continue to be enhanced. I think this project does that. I think some of the other uses, though, as Paula was mentioning, whether it be sailing or, or fishing, are also very popular out at Union. And our, our numbers of visitors are, I think somewhere around 100 and some thousand people visits out there. So it is already a very well-used and popular amenity.
So, so based on what you said, I guess my question going full circle is, do we want to proactively go after those northern properties to annex them into the city?
Couple of things. I, I believe that is in our interest long-term, whether it be through annexation or through agreement with, with property owners and/or Weld County to try to promote best management practices. I do know that we do have additional properties along the north side that we need to acquire ultimately for the expansion of the reservoir. So that's one that we would want to continue to pursue. But I think, I think we can actually be just as effective without necessarily having an annex, but to work with individual property owners to try to encourage best practices. And I think that can occur whether you annex or you just cooperatively work together with them.
I guess my opinion is just whether we annex it or whether we do what you say, I'd like to see the city take proactive action rather than waiting to do what we can to control that area, regardless of the use.
Mayor, I'd like to just add one bit of information about the water quality. Probably one to three times a year, our tests showed that the water quality deteriorates to the point that we do shut the beach down after large storm events. There's a runoff of fecal material and other things that make it unsuitable for swimming for two, three days after those events. The other thing is that maybe, maybe it wasn't, it wasn't mentioned strongly enough, the wakeless boating aspect of this is a real big, popular feature, too.
Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks really fun, my initial look at it. Two, two questions. Number one, it looks like we're building a lot of structures. Are we going to have the money to maintain those structures? Are we going to have the money to maintain those structures? It, it sounds like, based on your opinion of people coming in and paying to use these services, we will be able to keep them up? Is, is, is that what you're saying?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Witt, you know, this is a big project. This is nine and a half million is the current estimate, but that's basically based on the work done in 2007. There have been some changes made. There's also some assumptions made that some of this work would happen concurrent with the reservoir expansion, like the breakwater and some of the, the areas over there. So I've envisioned this as being a heavily phased project. I don't see us getting out the door right away with any major portion of this unless we can do it in a way so that we're not having to tear things down and, and rebuild them at high dollars later. The first phase, and I think you kind of alluded to this, Councilwoman Bagley, the Crusher Fines Trail is estimated at around $600,000 in this first phase. So the vast majority of this project is, is in out years. And we will have, again, more detailed design that we'll bring, bring back to council to discuss that. In terms of the ongoing operations and maintenance, you're quite aware, I'm sure, that with the capital improvement program, we do try to look at operations and maintenance costs. And certainly when council looks at future CIP phases of this and any project, hopefully those, those aspects of that project are considered at that time and weighed in as to whether that's the appropriate time to make that improvement or not.
And then my second question regarding some of the comments that were made in public invited to be heard. Some, some neighbors to, to Union Reservoir concerned about the traffic brought by the trail around. Is it possible to have something akin to single-track to, although complete the loop, discourage heavier use? Is, is that something possible?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Witt, certainly it's possible, and if that's a, a change that council would like to pursue. What we look at in recreational design, though, is accessibility, appropriate accessibility for the largest number of people. And I think single-track would probably defer that to a very small portion of the population. Now, what I can say is that we have a couple of built examples of trails next to ag areas that have been in operation now for several years and have been very successful. The St. Green Greenway Trail along Quicksilver Road and then continuing east along the Sherwood and Sandstone Open Space Areas. I have two different situations. One, one along the Boulder County Open Space on Quicksilver, they required us to put a fence in between the ag fields and the trail. I did talk to the farmer who's leasing that area recently to see, okay, how's that working for you? Are there any problems? What would you do differently? And he said, you know, the trail is fine. It's not a problem. I just get rid of the fence. The area down along the Sherwood Open Space does not have a fence, and we have basically had no problems with people getting into the fields or not. Now, every situation is different, and certainly we have patrols out there for a reason, to keep people where they should be. And certainly we need to regulate dogs in all open space areas. Wildlife is a huge concern when you have dogs off-leash. So I think that's one of the things we need to continually address through our management policies.
So basically, your, your crusher trail is like a three-foot wide trail or four-foot wide? And we probably just have runners and a few mountain bikes. I mean, obviously, people, the street bikes with narrow tires aren't going to be riding their bikes around.
Mayor Coombs, actually, what we envision this to be is an eight-foot wide crusher fines trail, because that would also allow maintenance vehicles and patrol to come, come around it, which is really the minimum width for that. We could go narrower, but then you're off in native grass and maybe getting bogged down for those purposes. So we do look at it as eight-foot.
Councilmember Levison.
Did you get enough follow-up? Councilmember Witt, are you sure? Okay. Just, just because you did the hand signal there. Thank you for, for bringing this back, Paula. I've been actually wondering for a long time when we would see this because it's been a long time coming. And we all got excited in '07 when we saw some of the original plans and, and I think there was a lot of excitement in, in the public, too. I, I have a couple of questions. We're talking about phasing this stuff. It's going to be, I, I don't know what comes first, the inundation or the realignment of roads and ditches? I mean, chicken and egg? And when you mentioned that the, the conceptual, the realignment of Weld County Road 26 was really not to serve the recreational purposes, but to serve a transportation purpose, at what level are we going to build that, that road? We're going to build it out to level of 119? Is it going to be considered a collector? I guess Nick Wolfram's going to have to come up here again. I'm so sorry, Nick. I guess I should know all this stuff by now, right? Is it going to be like equivalent to Collier Park? I mean, I mean, you know, like Collier, the street is to Collier Park, or is it going to be more like, you know, a heavier used road?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Members of Council, Nick Wolfram again. The, the road is shown, designated on, in the Weld County Comprehensive Plan as an arterial that, that once again goes to the function of the road. It's, it's, it's a road that moves people back and forth between, between areas and through there. We'll continue to kind of take a look at that. The primary issues on realignment that are, that are shown on that, on that graphic, Paula, do you have that? Are, are to do, to do two things. One, to pull the road south so that it's off the, off the dam as, 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 as that occurs. And, and secondly, I hope I don't put somebody's eye out with this, right now is that comes straight across down, down in this area to, to pull that intersection up so that it would align with the Ninth Avenue intersection, at that signalized intersection which we're building at that location, so that we're not bringing that into that residential street right there and matching that traffic up. And that's the originally what we talked to Weld County and had that, that change made there to pull that intersection up. So we're going to continue to watch that, see when traffic volumes start to get high on that, when and if they do, and if it, and if it needs to be relocated up at some point in time in the future to do that.
Traffic volume's high on which side of Weld County Road?
On the east- On 26.
On 26th side, where it would be. So where that ending in Weld County Road is really Ninth Avenue is the east side of Weld County Road then?
Right. Where, where we would, yeah, where, where it would start to become problematic with the intersection that goes into that residential neighborhood. I can't remember the name of that street off the top of my head. What's that? Deerwood. Thank you.
Deerwood, right.
Yeah, so that we don't want to get into a situation where we're having to signalize Deerwood or that we're directing that regional traffic into that residential area. That's when that road would, would pull to the north.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding. So again, where it ends up at County Line Road on this map that you're indicating, on the other side, that is Ninth Avenue.
This is Ninth Avenue right here.
Right there, okay. Because, yeah, where the light's going in. It's just that I haven't gotten that concept yet because I'm so used to going down and then churning.
Yeah.
So it's going to have to be kind of a walking, you know, kind of walk it off in your mind. And, and so I, I guess I, I'm wondering, since, you know, we have had discussion already with Weld County, with them, you know, not that we're agreeing to take over maintenance further east of that even. I mean, it seems like an enormous undertaking as far as the transportation budget to be able to do that realignment and then realigning a ditch. I don't really know what's involved with realigning a ditch, but it's got to be a lot because of, you know, water rights and everything else. So this sounds like the project is so complicated. I, I don't have really a good feeling yet for how the phasing would happen. And then can you give me some idea of, I know from previous council presentations that the Army Corps of Engineers has to get involved with, you know, whether we're going to be berming and how much the inundation and what it's all going to look like. Can we get some idea of follow-up with, you know, phasing of all of this? Because it seems like all the stars are going to have to align, you know, exactly right for things to even happen in the phases. And so I just want to figure out, you know, what the project looks at, looks like, and would we be done with this in 20 years? Or, I mean, are we going to be, Councilmember Samori and I will be floating our, you'll be doing the, the dead council member golf and race or something. We'll be, at first, we'll be on fast tracks to Denver, and we'll be like boating around here. Right. It's, it's a whole new concept of marketing for long line, you know? Councilmembers on the move like that. So, so give me some indication of, you know, timing of that phasing.
Mayor Coombs and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Levison, yeah, I, I totally agree. This has been really a challenging project to get your head around all the things that need to happen for the different elevations of change condition, the water level raising 13 feet is going to totally change the experience that you see out there today. So that is really why we need to put some money this year into continuing design development and really getting a better handle on, is there anything besides the interim loop trail that can be done prior to the reservoir expansion? As you all well know, you know, and as long as I've been with the city, the estimate for that reservoir expansion is 15 to 20 years, and I think it continually moves out each year as, as we go. So, you know, whether there's certain things that we make prudent risks or ways of constructing things that are movable, maybe that we can move back when the reservoir expands, those are the things we'll be looking at. But again, this year, we do intend to do some more detailed design, and as soon as we have that with a little bit of a phasing indication, we would definitely bring it back to council for your understanding.
And I guess the, the one element that we haven't talked about, and I know it's not part of this presentation, is, you know, where potential locations are for, you know, consolidated pads, you know, for, for well sites and whether or not that throws a monkey wrench into all of any kind of planning we would do. Because once a pad is established, you know, it's, we're not able to really do very much to execute this plan, no matter, you know, what the desires and the stars of mining and the money coming up, right?
Mayor Coombs and Councilwoman Levison, just one thing that I will point out in that regard is there is a existing well site at Sandstone Ranch down in the district park with the Greenway Connection Trail to Sandstone very close nearby. So, you know, I think modifications, especially on this scale of a design, the plan is quite large, and it's hard to understand the detail of that. We do have some potential to realign either the trail or possibly coexist with it in fairly reasonably close proximity. So if somebody wants to correct me, they can.
Well, and, and I'm just guessing, though, the industry has some stan- some sort of standard, that they wouldn't want anybody within even 10 or 15 feet of the fence.
There is a, a zone around it, and I, I apologize, I can't remember back to our work at Sandstone Ranch, but it seems like maybe 50 feet from the, from the well site itself is kind of the area that you can't enter, and beyond that, it's acceptable.
And I guess, are we doing yearly monitoring of the various bird populations out here to make sure that we're constantly updating? Because, you know, the animals don't know that they're really, the eagles don't know that they're not supposed to do anything but, you know, hang out like Starbucks during the day and fish and talk and chat and drink some, you know, some reservoir water and eat some fish and stuff, and they go root somewhere else. I mean, we, we, are we constantly monitoring and doing these surveys when we have the migratory birds? And then how often do we check for the, the owls that occupy, that could occupy the prairie dog habitat?
That's a great question, and Mayor and Councilwoman Levison. I can't say that the city specifically does those counts and, and monitoring, but between the Division of Wildlife, the local Audubon Clubs, obviously, the Christmas bird count just happened last week, I believe. That's a big inventory information which feeds into that database that I mentioned earlier. So groups like that do continually monitor the birds out there. The other thing that can be said is that before any development is done, the actual survey, so wetlands delineation and, for instance, if we had pre-bulls habitat here, which we don't, but we would do a pre-bull survey at that time. We will do a burrowing owl survey prior to development. The northern leopard, leopard frog will be close to some wetland edges, so we will be doing surveys for those things as part of that work.
And then that update that I read recently to the native plant species, the, is it an orchid that's the, that's the-
Trystolus.
Yeah. That, those are, those are opportunities that if we have something like that, we don't want to, you know, stomp on those treasures either. You know, I, I guess I'm still having problems wrapping my mind around how big a project this is and trying to get, I'll have to just get out there and do it. One other thing, I do want to, you know, acknowledge and consider the neighbors out there. When I've been out to Union Reservoir, one thing I've found is, the more corduroy the road, the slower people go. And to be honest with you, if you're going to build something that's a wonderful road, you're going to have people, you know, out there just going crazy 50, 60 miles an hour. And what I find is in the summertime, you know, you're not going to, to, you know, jiggle everything out of your suspension if you're not in a really big truck. So I think that while there are the just concerns in having corduroy roads are inconvenient, it does keep speeds down for people, especially maybe younger drivers out there that are not, that might have a tendency thinking it's a country road to go as fast as they possibly could. So there's pros and cons about that. But I, I really encourage staff to keep in, in the loop with these neighbors out there because they have been great partners in, in so many times for us, eyes and ears and, also helping care, take care of the land. So I also appreciate you all coming out tonight.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I keep coming back to one word, actually two words, fecal matter. And the thoughts that are coming to me are, where else could we spend $10 million? Is kind of the question I have. And so I know we already have rowing and we have boats. They're already using the reservoir. And my question becomes, if we did all this and invested $10 million, how many more people would use it, given that it's not a lake, it's a reservoir? And, I mean, I've heard security issues, wildlife, roads, trails, neighbors. I mean, there's a lot of concern, I mean, not passionate, but at the same time, since I've been on city council, I've, I've been made privy to, I mean, we could have a performing arts center, we could build a museum, we, I mean, there's a lot we could do with $10 million. We could almost finish the RTD bus station on First and Main. So I'm not, I'm not anti-fun. I'm all for fun. My question is, is it's one of opportunity cost? And up at CU, there's a, I mean, I teach part-time in the business school, and I first learned about the road to Abilene back when I was in grad school. And at some point, somebody goes, hey, 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 you know what? We should do something this weekend. And then somebody says, well, where do you want to go? And somebody tosses out, well, I want to go to Abilene. And they didn't really want to go to Abilene. But the next thing you know, nobody else had anywhere better to go. They all get in a car, they drive a full day to Abilene, and they get out and they say, okay, what do you want to do? Nobody wanted to go. And so my question is, are we kind of on the road to Abilene? Do we want to spend $10 million on this project when we've got fracking going on, when we've got, you know, wildlife, when we've got fiscal concerns about spending $10 million? And do we want to keep sending the staff back saying, well, keep going, keep going, keep going? When we're really not planning on doing anything at the Union Reservoir other than using our water rights to shore up that nobody else is going to do anything? Just kind of throwing it out there. Do we really want to continue to have staff spend resources on Union Reservoir when it might not be feasible? I didn't plan on saying that tonight before I got here, but that's the question. Do we really want to do this at Union Reservoir? Because I've got concerns, and I mean, if you, I mean, I can think of a lot of things we can do with $10 million. And so just asking a question.
And Mayor, I'll let Paula answer some of those questions, but the one thing I want to get everybody oriented on is the $10 million that's going to come from open space and recreation may not be the $10 million you could spend even if you wanted to on fast tracks or anything else. So the, the source of revenue is very important. So the source of revenue is very important when you're starting to talk about other opportunities.
And just to add to that, thank you Gordon, Mayor and Council. Just would like to say a couple of things. One is the master plan is a vision and it's a long-range vision and it gets implemented in small steps. So I think, you know, even those portions of the plan or even if the majority of the plan is many years out, it helps focus staff's planning around that area to eventually exercise that whole vision. And the other thing I could say is just in terms of recreational planning, we have a rare commodity here with Union Reservoir and certainly with the increased water surface of the expansion project. It will certainly be one of the very few reservoirs in the entire state that has the opportunities for water-based recreation. Certainly the only one in Longline of its size. And certainly with its proximity and location and the great views and many of the other things around there, I think it is truly an opportunity for some tourism and as well as just very significant enjoyment by your own residents.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Gordon, you made my point for me. That, you know, this is money that's dedicated, whether it's water storm drainage, open space funds. You can't allocate this money to other projects or other CIP projects. Kind of went through that there in the budget because I remember it was mentioned that we should move three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do, to underground some things and you couldn't move this pot of money into this pot over here. So, I understand the concerns, but kind of like what you said, it is a vision. Kind of with Dry Creek Park. I look at Dry Creek Park as a long-term vision to have another fabulous park. This is another long-term vision for this, for Union Reservoir. And whether it's, you know, it's always interesting, and I'm hearing this quite often these days, not in my backyard, don't put it here, don't put it there. You know, we want that, but don't put it here, don't put it there. Every project, every master plan, every city-owned building has, it's gonna have its quirks. It may be a lot to encompass and I remember going through, Paul and you were here often with Dry Creek Park. Sometimes getting bumped. You kept coming back. But seeing how this process works, where you get money here, you get money here, you get money there, you get a grant here, you get a grant there to make this park work. And sometimes it is very hard to visualize. But when you see the master plan and what, conceptually, what it could be, it's all right there.
Thank you, Paul. I see no other questions. Councilmember Bagley.
Is there anything we can do to get rid of the fecal matter?
Mayor and Council.
I feel a lot better personally.
Well, it's a test for E. coli and every open water body that has swimming in it tests for it on a regular basis. Every reservoir in the state and in the country and probably in the world has incidents of E. coli outbreaks and we do have to shut down swimming when those things occur. Red flag warnings along the ocean, same thing.
Okay.
So it's not unusual, we're not alone.
Okay, the world swims in it.
And nature does take care of it. After a few days, it dissipates.
Thank you.
I think on water quality, I must be the canary in the mine because I cannot swim in Union Reservoir without being stuffed up and congested for three days. But I could swim in Horse Tooth and Carter Lake, but it's just me. My friends that I swim with, they're fine, but.
So Mayor and Council, what I would like to refocus you back on is, are you then ready for me to bring a resolution back for formal adoption of the master plan? Or are there changes you'd like to see made to the plan before that happens?
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we direct staff to bring back the master plan as presented.
Okay, no other discussions? Shall we vote on that? Okay, it passes seven to zero, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council members? Councilmember Witt.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor. I do have something. This year, the Republican and Democratic caucuses are, or is it caucus? I don't know, but they're on different days. But they are on Tuesdays, which is also council night. And in order for everybody who comes to city council meetings and staff and everything, everybody who would want to go to caucus, I would like us to cancel our meetings on February seventh. And help me with the Democratic caucus date. It's March, I believe. March could be seventh? Hold on, let me get my calendar. I'm sorry, but the most pressing one would be February seventh because it's coming up sooner. Can I get a second on that? Can I have a second? Okay, thank you.
So the motion was to cancel or February seventh meeting. Cancel that. And we have a second. Councilmember Levison.
Well, you know, I don't know, have we ever done that before? Every year we've done that. You know, I guess I just want to make sure that we get our work done. That's, you know, I know we're, we sit in a nonpartisan board here, but there are, you know, if you want to be active in their political party, I can understand that. So I guess we just have to ask staff whether or not we can get everything done that we need to get done. And I know that if it's, we're looking at canceling a March date, depending on how many of us are going to National League of Cities, that means we're gonna blow off two March dates. Because if many of us are at National League of Cities in March, I think that that date would, is, I'm trying to think of it, like, March 12th? Is that Tuesday in March that National League of Cities is held? Maybe it's the 13th. It's the 13th, then we have a possibility of having, you know, two meetings gone in March too. So I'm already registered for the meeting. I have obligations at the meeting. And I highly recommend, that's really our only time to get to Washington and do some one-on-one contact in offices. People that have been before know how helpful that is. Anyway, you know, I would go along with it, but, you know, it becomes problematic in March, frankly, to be able to do that.
Okay, I guess we have a motion and a second. No other discussion? Let's, go ahead.
Can you just restate the motion?
The motion is to cancel the meeting on February sixth.
I believe it's the seventh.
Seven, okay, excuse me, the seventh. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I feel more comfortable voting for both dates just because, you know, one or the other, you suggested both, that's fine. You know, do we have any idea? I know Sandy's not here this evening to know what we have coming up in March too.
That's a little bit far out probably, so I couldn't tell you what we might be looking at, but if it's a study session, we can work around the study session. We just probably have you do more general business items the next time you are in session and you'd have to stay a little later and you'd have to get everybody to agree that that was what your plan was.
Councilmember Witt.
I would like to amend my motion that we cancel the February seventh and the March sixth meeting. That will cover both, both. Is it March sixth? I had no idea.
Yeah.
I have no idea, I just looked on that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councilmember Santos has looked and indicated March sixth. You know, and with the understanding that we don't take off spring break week if it falls to last week in March. So let's, you know, I know some people like to take spring break off too, but, you know, really concerned about getting work done, folks.
I guess my concern is, our number one priority is to make sure that we have the, all of our i's dotted and t's crossed on the ordinances that we want to get passed for our hundred and twenty days time clock that's running. I just, you know, if we can do that and still miss two meetings, I'm fine with it. But if not, I'm kind of against it.
Councilmember Witt.
I remember, isn't it traditional that we take off on caucus day? I thought it was. Can somebody answer that for me?
Mayor, it has varied. Sometimes on study sessions, caucus nights, they have started an hour later than normal and still had a meeting. And it seems like a couple of times it's been canceled. So it's really what the council needs. And Mayor, as far as the ordinances, I believe that we'll take those up on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month and we should be all right with that matter.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm torn getting out of meeting or getting done early. I'm probably for not doing the caucus. I'm probably gonna vote for, I think we should just do our business because I'd rather spread out the work. And I feel a little guilty, just noticed everyone, I will be here on the 24th. I'm gonna be in Manitoba, Canada, so please be patient with me. But that's probably my thoughts, I'll probably vote against it as well.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess one of the options we haven't considered, instead of staying late, is maybe starting earlier on some of those times so we can be finished sooner. And that would be a reasonable compromise. It gives everybody what they need and allows us to get our work done. So a friendly amendment?
I would be fine with that.
So we're talking at five o'clock start time? Five thirty? That's Tuesday. Councilmember Levison.
Mayor, maybe we just go ahead and vote on the current motion and then, you know, if we can work with staff on our schedule, might be that they can arrange things such that we don't have to then start changing council rules and procedure that say we start our meetings at seven, which, you know, we'll be, having staff do more work for us to be able to accommodate our interest in participating in the political process. I don't want to make it more difficult and more convoluted. So if you don't mind, I'd like to call the question.
Councilmember Witt. We don't, we have a motion. We need a second. I'm calling the question. Okay, I'll second it. Yeah, calling the questions what we're voting on. And then we've got to pass by two-thirds majority, is that correct? Doesn't pass. Councilmember Witt.
Okay, so that was the vote on calling the question, correct?
Right, that's it.
Okay, all right. I just want to clarify, it is not about just these seven people up here. It is also about the people who come to council meeting. I'm not doing this just because I have never missed a caucus meeting in ten years. No. It is also because people who are avid activists don't want to have to make that choice. They want to go to council meeting and they want to go to caucus. So it's not just about us, it's about staff. So let's not make it about just us.
I guess, okay, I guess we'll vote on the, the motion is to cancel the meeting on February seventh and March sixth. Both study sessions. All right. Let's vote. All right, it passes four to three with Bagley, Santos and Coombs descending. Okay, any other council comments? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Happy New Year to everybody.
I'll second that. City manager, any comments?
Mayor, just to remind you that at five thirty next Tuesday, you have a pre-session involving water issues. And at that point, you will get exposed to a lot of information and you'll be able to determine whether the city manager is flimflamming you or giving you a straight story.
Thank you, Gordon. City attorney, any comments?
I'm starting off the new year with no comments.
We are adjourned.